Good evening. If we could call this meeting to order, please. I'd like to welcome you to the Joint Meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the Former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. And if I could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Delosa?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
And if you could please join me in the Pledge of Agents. Thank you. And we'll move on to Item 4, Approval of Minutes from our last meeting on February 11th. Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions? Okay, please show a 5-0 vote. And we'll move on to Item Number 5, Announcements. Meeting Orientation for New Attendees or Viewers. In Conformance with the Brown Act and the Adopted City Council Rules, (excuse me), the meeting agenda includes items labeled as "Action Items," where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting also includes a Citizens Business Item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com, or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Now we'll move on to Item Number 6, which is our Honorary Mayor, Madison Zwing of Technology High School. Come on forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening. The last time I was here, I spoke about my personal goals and interests. After the last meeting, I spoke to teachers and students at Technology High School about how they would like to make this community better. One of the main ideas was extra help on homework for kids in Kattati. Many of our students go to Ronert Park or Santa Rosa schools and, yeah, and aren't able to stay after school because of issues such as transportation. I believe we can help students by creating a program for after-school tutoring. Many students I've talked to expressed their concern about not being able to keep up their grades or get help. They often find themselves stressed and worried about this. There are many possibilities for tutors and help here in the community. The availability of tutoring would allow kids to improve their grades and their study In addition, a fair number of parents and students struggle with many of the new programs today, especially with Common Core and new changes in the education system. Having a safe place available for tutoring would be extremely helpful for students and parents in our community. Another point that people brought up was community involvement in something such as the Thursday night markets. I spoke to several people who would like to see more involvement in the Thursday night markets as far as more vendors and more entertainment. They would also like to see more involvement in the shopping stroll. When I asked about what they meant, they felt as if it would be better if it was moved to spring or summer. Small businesses who participate in the shopping stroll have stopped signing up due to fear of rain. This has caused people to stop going in general. The community would like to see more involvement between tutoring, support of small businesses, and Thursday night markets. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for checking in with folks and giving us that report. I'll bring it back to council, see if there's any follow-up questions or anything. Councilmember Lehman?
That's what I get for looking at my notes. You caught me. Madison, good to see you again. I'm curious, so I think you're one of the first honorary mayors that's mentioned so clearly, that I've heard at least, that you also talk to your teachers about their thoughts. And it's interesting, what did you find different in the breakdown of responses? Were they kind of the same? Was one leaning more towards the other? Or was it essentially the same?
Many of the answers were very similar in terms of tutoring, because I know our school, we do have a tutoring program, but not everybody's able to stay for that. And so that was the main issue between the teachers and the students, because there is a fair amount of communication between everybody there.
Okay, so you have a tutoring program, but it's kind of a time-based thing, so something in this community closer, I suppose, to home might be beneficial. All right, well, it isn't like we haven't put enough in our Recreation Department, Ms. Wilson, but this, who knows? This is a great suggestion, I really like it, so thank you so much for bringing that.
Okay, now Vice Mayor Moore.
Hello, Matty, thanks so much for coming back with that information. I don't know that I have heard some of the other honorary mayors reference businesses and some of the concern there. I think that's a broader vision, and I think that you bring to that. It's very interesting, and I think that's just another component that really shows that you are out there in the community and you're kind of aware of what's going on, so I thank you for that, and that's something to consider and bring back, especially as the liaison to the chamber commerce. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Harvey?
I have a question about the tutoring. Is it that they are looking for tutors, or just a place for the tutors to meet with the students? That was a little unclear to me.
Um...
Or both?
I'd say both, because there is, like I said previously, the issues with something such as transportation. They can't stay after school, or they can't stay during seventh period, or their schedules don't match up.
So, an ability to have someone be able to pick them up afterwards, or at least a place where they could...
A place to be able to have that opportunity.
Okay, okay, great, that helps, and I agree, maybe we could have the Recreation Department look at that. I also like the thought about the shopping stroll, moving that to a better weather. I know the last few times it's been a little bit of a problem, and I do recall seeing a survey out, I think on Nextdoor, about the possibility of kind of moving the whole farmer's market to a different day and time, so that kind of goes along with that. But those are great ideas, and thank you for that input, and thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Delosa?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, all great points, I don't want to be a dead horse, as they say, but just to throw out there, I think, you know, the tutoring part, that could be something that even students from SSU, if they have an interest in doing something like that, or they have a specialty, if I recall, your specialty was math, the last time? Just kidding, I remember. But, you know, to get students from SSU over here to do some of that, and we have facilities, it's a matter of logistics, but our Recreation Coordinator will definitely take a look at something like that. And I was going to mention, like Councilmember Harvey did, about the shopping stroll. I know sometimes in the winter, it's a shop and kayak if it rains super hard, so I think, and they can keep the one in the wintertime, because it's appropriate for the holiday season, but maybe the chamber might be interested in doing a second one in better weather, spring or summer or something. So, those are all really good points, and again, thanks for coming back with these ideas.
Yeah, so again, thank you, and if you would like, do you have anybody you want to introduce this evening who's here with you?
My mom and my dad are here.
Hello, parents. And then if you'd like, I've got a plaque, a certificate to present to you, and then we can come down and take a photo if anybody wants to grab the camera. Okay, so that takes us to Item Number 7, Approval of the Final Agenda, and are there any changes? Mr. Obin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Two proposed changes I'll put forward tonight. One is moving Item 12A, Appointment of Planning Commission Member to the end of Consent, so right before Item 10. And then just flip-flopping the public hearings under Item 11, so 11B would come first, followed by 11A.
Okay, is that a thumbs up agreeable to City Council members? Okay? Oh, it's okay with you, okay, gotcha, perfect. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to Item 8, Citizens Business and Public Comment for Consent Calendar Items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the Consent Calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take actions on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I'll open up Citizens Business. And I, yes, Ms. Alderman?
Four hundred and ninety-seven pages of an agenda packet? It's like half of, reading half of War and Peace ain't happening. How can you keep people, how can the citizens keep any idea of what all that means? Four hundred and ninety-seven pages is, I put it in a calculator, eight hours to read? Are we supposed to read all that so we know what are happening in the city? I didn't. I just think you really need to even out your subjects. There was a whole heck of a lot tonight, and you could have put the electrical discussion on future, you just need, we don't need one-hour meetings, that's four-hour meetings. We need some consistency here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And I have a speaker card, Mr. Berich.
Good evening. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Berich, I'm a former City Council member here in Kattati, and I want to take you back to the recall election here in Kattati in 2009. The recall here in town of George Berich was all about retaliation. Nothing more, nothing less. Retaliation for voting against certain items the council felt that were important, for holding office hours each week here in Kattati, for refusing to take a paycheck while the city was financially underwater, and so forth and so forth. During the recall campaign, the city, the council members shook down local business owners to donate thousands and thousands of dollars to distribute their recall propaganda throughout the community. Now, to have integrity, to do what you say you're going to do, to say what you are going to do, and it also means to respect other viewpoints, to be tolerant. I tried to exemplify that, sitting on the City Council in 2009, but the other four council members were so drunk on power, they felt they needed, that I needed to be taught a lesson, which was that any dissension, any viewpoints that went against the majority would not be tolerated. What they learned, and what they learned the hard way, I think, is that their transgressions and hatred only strengthen my resolve. This City Council represents the far-left communist wing of the Democratic Party. It's my job, I've taken it upon myself, and with others, to expose this council, as I have done now for over 20 years. It's been the objective of these Soviets on the City Council to silence any and all conservative voices in our community, and independent voices in our community. The City Council over the years betrayed me. How did they do this? They asked for public input and public participation. It was Councilmember Sandy Ellis and John Deloso, Harold Burckheimer, Richard Cullen, who sat there and said, "We need more public participation." When I participated, they could not handle the diversity of thought and a different point of view. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And does anybody else wish to speak on Citizens Business? Okay, oh, did you want to? Of course, come forward. That's okay, come on forward, thank you.
I live at 903 West School, and just wanted to say that it's been a number of years since I had gone to tree lighting in December, and a friend asked me to bring her five and 10-year-old, and take them out in the rain, and I was delighted to do it, and it was really fantastic, so I just wanted to say that we thoroughly enjoyed it, and the kids tried to keep me up longer than two hours. Great job, so thanks for doing that.
All right, thank you. Anything else on Citizens Business tonight? Okay, does anybody want to speak separately on the Consent Calendar Items? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close Public Comment and Consent Calendar, and bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, for item 9, are you happy to move the Consent Calendar?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Consent Calendar Items A, B, and C. All those in favor, pass it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, please show a 5-0 vote in favor. Now, per our request from City Manager, let's move on to Item 12A, which is Appointment of, what's that? Oh, I was sneaking it in there right before direction, yes, but thank you. So, Appointment of Planning Commissioner Member, and this is Vice Mayor Moore's nomination of Ms. Lemus. So am I turning it over to anybody? Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, as is outlined in the staff report, the city's process for appointing planning commission members is set forth in Chapter 2.16 of the Kattati Municipal Code, and the basic process, I'll just paraphrase, is that the, each council member nominates one, one planning commission member, that nominee comes before the full council for a ratification vote. And recently, one of our planning commissioners, Councilmember Moore, Vice Mayor Moore's Council member, Vice Mayor Moore's Planning Commission Member, sorry, had to leave the planning commission due to work obligations, and so it created an empty seat. And we put the position out, we advertised for it, and we got two applications, which are both in the packet, and Sylvia Lemus is Vice Mayor Moore's nominee for tonight. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So, bring it to council, are there any questions to pass on to City Manager? Okay?
I didn't know, Ms. Lemus, I didn't know if you wanted to come up and say a few words, if I may?
Hello, councilmembers, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for having me. My name is Sylvia Lemus, and it's a pleasure to be nominated as a planning commissioner for the City of Kattati. I am, I've been working for a long time countywide, and so I'm very glad to bring it here locally. I've been a Kattati resident for 13 years, and have worked, like I said, countywide on different task force and committees and organizations. But there's that saying, "Think globally, act locally," so I'm glad that I'm bringing my work and knowledge and skills here locally, so I'm looking forward to planning commission work. And the why, I should say, the wild, wild work of planning commission work. Because I came to a meeting last, last week or two, and it ended up being a long meeting, but it was really interesting, so, thank you. Any questions, anyone have, or?
I don't know, I know we looked at the packet, and so it had a lot of background information on you, so we'll see, are there any more questions anybody else has?
Yeah, I don't, thank you, Mayor, I don't have any questions. I certainly just want to thank you both, and what, Mr. Doherty, I don't know if Mr. Doherty's here tonight, I don't believe so, who applied for this opening on the vacancy on the planning commission, and it's really great to see, you know, our citizens taking a big step. You know, it's one thing to be in the audience, or to sit home and watch it, but it's really, it's a whole nother thing when you're a part of those meetings, because it takes on a different level of responsibility, so thank you.
You're welcome. I feel like I, I've always been called to public service, as you can see, I've kind of been involved in different things, and so it just, it's a pleasure for me to kind of do what I can to help community. Thank you.
Kendra Arvin?
Yes, thank you for applying, and I also would wish that the City Manager would reach out to Vincent. I think it's a good problem to have, to have two very interested and very capable candidates, so I do hope if we have another opening in some capacity, that Vincent will consider that opportunity too. So, thank you for applying, and I agree with you when you say that it's wonderful to start acting locally and be providing input in your own community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from this side of the dais?
Certainly, I'm going to echo my colleagues and just say, what a wonderful situation to be to have two very good applications like this. We're very pleased, it shows, I think, the interest, the health of this community, and it's important to the future to have new people coming in, so with a vast range of experience, which certainly you bring, so that's something that's very valuable. And I'll disagree with you, I think you have a lot that you brought here. I'm looking forward to seeing more Kattati-specific stuff, and now you're going to have the chance to do that, so I'm ready to support that. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Vice Mayor Moore?
Ms. Lemus, thank you very much for stepping up and applying for the planning commission. I think it'll be a wonderful breath of fresh air, and having all your knowledge and experience bring in more community focus, I think it'll be terrific, so thank you again.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I know, is it your cousin Esther?
My sister.
Your sister, ha-ha.
I'm the older sister, she's my little sister.
I was going to say, I'm like, there's a little bit more than a cousin resemblance, so, anyway, I used to work with her, so please pass on my hello, and thank you so much. Again, I'll echo what everybody was saying here for putting yourself forward and bringing your experience and background to the challenges ahead, so thank you very much.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, since it's an action item, we can open it up to public comment, anybody like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close Public Comment, and bring it back to council.
Well, after that moment of suspense, certainly, I would like to make a motion that we adopt Sylvia Lemus to fill the vacant planning commission position. I'd be happy to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes 5-0. Thank you so much, and you're welcome to stay, or if you have other things going on tonight, you're welcome to head back out, so thank you very much. So now we will go backwards in time to Item Number 10, Direction on Future Agenda Items. Do we have anything from council this evening to add to?
No, we'll be here to discuss that.
That's true. Anything on this side for direction?
Not on that.
Okay.
Not with 497 pages.
That's true. All right, gotcha. So, with that, we'll move on to Item 11, and then just to confuse things, Item 11B, which is Packet Page 219, if anybody needs help finding it.
So this item is the ADU Ordinance, First Reading, and Senior Planner JP Harries is
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Paul Harries, I'm a senior planner with the City of Kattati, and as was stated, we're going to talk about accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and adoption of an ordinance, or introduction of an ordinance to regulate development of those accessory housing units. So, first of all, a couple preliminaries. The primary reason we're here tonight is because our existing ordinance was made null and void in 2016, actually, with changes at the state level, and we knew there'd be changes, more additional changes coming, and in 2017, there were additional changes, and then in 2019, there was actually many different bills. I think six bills came in in 2019 alone, affecting the development of ADUs. So now, we think it's important that we do pull our ordinance together, bring it up to speed with state law, as well as incorporate elements that are important for Kattati's review and approval of these units. It's the first of several housing ordinances and changes you're going to probably see coming, there'd be more. And also want to remind the council, since you authorized our application, we were granted, were awarded $160,000 to help with housing work, we applied for an SB2 planning grant, and so the staff time that was used to accomplish this ordinance development was, will be reimbursed through that grant. And then I also want to say that we did have a housing workshop and discussed ADUs there. We also discussed this at the Planning Commission in January, and then at both the Planning Commission, there was no public comment, right, and no, and we had received no written communication from anybody. So the only communication we got received was today at about 2:30, and you have a copy of the letter for, from California's for Home Ownership. And in response to the letter, there was one small change, and I'll discuss that as it comes up, but in general, they have one view of interpreting the statute, and we have another. Theirs is a little more extreme than ours, and we're going to really rely to see, well, we have to submit our ordinance to HCD within 60 days, so we'll see how they respond to it as well. They have yet to weigh in on some of these issues which are being debated within the statute. It's a very confusing statute, probably because so many bills had to try to come together to produce it, so. So let's, let's move on. So what is an ADU? Well, ADU is short for Accessory Dwelling Unit, that's a term that was codified in 2016. Previously, we referred to them as second units, and colloquially, they're known as granny units, or in-law suites, or carriage houses, but generally, they're independent self-contained dwelling units. They're accessory to the single-family dwelling, and they can be either detached or attached. You can also convert part of the interior of a home into an ADU, and the residence can either be existing or proposed, so you can do this as a one larger development package, and develop both an ADU and a primary residence. They are required to be independent, so they have their separate access, kitchen and sanitation facilities, and... facilities, and they range from approximately 150 square feet, which is building, or the definition of an efficiency unit, up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet in floor area. Also, in 2016, they developed this notion of a junior accessory dwelling unit. At the time, they didn't require cities to allow for them, but that changed in 2019. They're mostly independent self-contained dwelling units, and by mostly, the big difference between them and an ADU, one of the big differences is you're allowed to share a bathroom with a junior accessory dwelling. So you can have an interior door between units with a shared bathroom. They are limited to 500 square feet or less, and they must be built within the walls of an existing or proposed unit, but contained within the unit, the primary dwelling. They are required to have their own separate access, and they are required to have a kitchen. So just a little bit of background, prior to 2003, we used to require a use permit for this, so all these would require public hearings, and it was all discretionary. That changed in 2003 because of state law, and so the city adopted ordinance number 746, which created our second ordinance, and it's in your packet on page 231, our existing, our existing ordinance, and which is pretty much unchanged from 2003, just slight changes in the sizes of units that we allowed. But other than that, it's really pretty much the same. So there's been virtually no changes. And it set it up to be ministerial, meaning that these are non-discretionary. Someone comes in, they apply for a building permit, and if it meets standards, it's approved automatically. So we don't get to debate or take it to a hearing and discuss various issues that may result from the development. Also, we didn't permit JADUs, we didn't simply, didn't have an ordinance to approve them. So, since 2016, our ordinance is null and void, and we've been reviewing ADUs under state law. And I stated in the packet, I think we did, we've done about six, I think, under state law. None have been frightening, or, you know, scary or anything. They've been standard, smallish ADUs. Just, I'm not going to go through any of this, but I just want you to see that these are the bills that have come through in the last three years with respect to legislation for, just for ADUs, and you can imagine all the housing bills on top of this as well. So, there's really three ways to look at the ordinance that's before you. One are changes that we have to make. If we're going to have an ordinance, we have to have certain things in it to comply with state law. There's a few things, only a few, that we actually can debate about that are elective, and we can decide where we want the city to go. And then there, then there's a pack of what I would call clarifying changes. These are just definitions that our code doesn't have now, or is being introduced by the ordinance, and so should be defined. So the first is name change. We're no longer using the word second units, everything is now accessory dwelling units. Also, a big change that happened is previously, ADUs were only allowed in single-family homes. So as of 2020, you may now have ADUs in multifamily properties. They can be either detached, possibly attached, that's one of the things people are debating about, or built within the actual multifamily dwelling building structures themselves. And it could be a garage, or it could be the housing units, but within an attic or a hallway that's not being used, or a boiler room, or anything else that can be converted to living space and still meet building code requirements, of course. There are some limits on the numbers. You can do two detached, but they're limited in height and setbacks. And you can have, within the multifamily units, up to 25% of the existing units, but we have to allow at least one. So if there's only two, they can do a third, so. That's a neat thing. Also, I already mentioned, the JADU provisions are a new change that we need to incorporate. And I should say, we don't have to adopt an ordinance. It's at our discretion whether we want to or not. If we don't, then we operate entirely under state law, which is pretty liberal in its application, and we wouldn't be able to talk about our elective changes that I'm going to discuss in a little bit. But I just want you to know that we don't have to adopt this. I think we should. And I think all the communities are, pretty much are doing that. Oh, also, number four, there is allowance for an ADU and a JADU. The way the state law is written, you can, you can, you must allow one ADU and one JADU if requested. So you can have now up to three dwelling units on a single-family zone property. Regarding zoning and allowable uses, we can't, the ADUs and JADUs can't be banned, so we can't prohibit them everywhere. We do need to designate where they can be permitted, and that designation, we can look at water and sewer capacity, traffic, and public safety in determining those areas. Right now, we're proposing all residential and mixed-use areas. The only area that we're not suggesting change right now is the Santero Way specific plan, excuse me, specific plan area, and that's because several factors. One, we have a lot of development potential still in that plan area, and we're already nearing capacity issues. One is the roadway width is substandard, we already know that there's parking issues there, and, where's another, another? Oh, well, fire access, that's another day. If we're going to develop additional residential units, we need a second access into that area. So we can't, and park, I did say parking. So, anyway, for those reasons, we're not willing to go down that path right now with Santero Way. The rest of the city, the residential and mixed-use areas, they would be permitted. With respect to parking, our current null-and-void ordinance, as well as the proposed ordinance, requires one parking space for an ADU. However, no parking is required if you're within a half-mile walking distance to a bus stop, or if it's within part of the proposed or existing residence, or if you have parking permits, street permits, but the ADU folks are not offered those permits, or when there's car share available. And I would say, the reason I starred that top item up there, within a one-half-mile walking distance, this law changed, actually. Prior to 2019, it actually said within a half-mile, and so that's been changed. When it did say half-mile, I, you know, drew circles around every single bus stop, and it pretty much covered the whole city. With this provision, half-mile walking distance, it may actually exclude some homes on the west side, but those are the larger properties, and parking's not going to be an issue there anyway. Everywhere else in the city, though, that, we're not going to be able to apply parking standards to the development of ADUs. And in addition to that, if you choose to convert your garage to an ADU, which you can do, we cannot require replacement parking. So even though we do require two covered, two covered parking spaces, at a later date, you can always change that to an accessory dwelling unit, and without needing to replace Regarding the size of accessory dwelling units, we used to, used to base it basically on the lot size, and that's shown in the existing ordinance. Going forward, there's no minimum lot size. You can develop an ADU on any size lot. And then this is where it's going to start to get a little confusing and convoluted. So we must allow for at least an 800-square-foot ADU if it's less than, if it has one bedroom or less. If it has two bed, is that right? Yeah. If it has two bedrooms, it must allow, we must, we must allow at least 1,000 square feet. So we can't put bigger limits than that, or lower limits than that. So we can't say 600 is the most you can get. We have to allow 850. Now, this is where it gets a little bit odd, but, so we also have development standards, we have land coverage standards, we have what are called floor area, they're not floor ratios, but we say that an attached ADU cannot exceed a certain percentage of the primaries' residence in terms of floor area. In this case, it's 50%. So, if we had someone, and I use L-section as an example in the staff report, that wanted to build an ADU, but they were already at 40% coverage or more, maybe they're at 50% coverage, and you see that a lot over in L-section, they would be prevented from building an ADU in the past. We would say, you don't have, you would have to remove land coverage from somewhere else, and typically, they don't have the ability to remove land coverage. They can convert their driveway to a permeable surface, perhaps, but that's really, you know, additional costly expense, and most don't want to do that. So, but now, going forward, we have to allow irrespective of land coverage, or how the attached floor area compares to the primary residence, we have to make, we have to allow it to be at least 800-square-foot unit. That is at least 16 feet in height, and they can go within four feet of the rear and side property lines. So, I'm seeing confused faces, and if you want to ask clarified questions, please do, because it might, or we can wait till the end, whatever you want. But it's, so it's 850 or 1,000, unless they run into development standards, and then, then it drops down to 800, but we have to allow at least that. So hopefully, that helps clarify a little bit. Height and setbacks. Previously, we limited all ADUs to 20 feet, and we required them to conform to the setback requirements of the zoning district. For example, in L-section, the rear setback is 20 feet, and a five-foot side setback. Now, the way the state legislation requires us to allow for 16-foot, it must, must allow for 16-foot ADU, and they can be within four feet of the rear and four feet of the side setback. So you can, you can build them right up in the, you know, the back corner there, 16 feet in height. Also, previously, I guess probably prior to 2016, if anyone building an accessory dwelling unit was considered a residential unit, living space, it required sprinklers if you were, if it was a new development, just like a new house would require that. Going forward, sprinklers would only be required in an ADU if the primary dwelling is, they were required to install fire sprinklers. So, all the old residences that don't have fire sprinklers, if they build, and want to build an ADU, they do not have to put sprinklers in that ADU. If you have a newer residence, then you would have to. Utility connections, we can't require separate utility connections, nor can we assess connection fees for utilities. This probably is not going to affect us too much, because as a practice, we don't allow people to run separate laterals to their ADUs. We do require them to hook up to their existing utilities, to their utility lines, so we don't charge for separate connections anyway. So we don't see that this is really going to affect us. And then the next item is development impact fees. The state law says that under, if it's any ADU less than 750 square feet, no development impact fees. So I suspect this is probably going to be one of those magic numbers, that we'll see a lot of them go right up to 749, and, and not go over, but, but you never know. Anything over 750, the fees must be proportional, this is right out of the, out of the statute, must be proportional in relation to the square footage of the primary residence. There's still a lot of talk amongst planners about what that means exactly, because there are different ways to interpret it. But we don't have to make a decision on that tonight. That's going to come back to city council when we do develop the impact fee schedule for ADUs. So currently, if someone proposes an ADU, we're not collecting impact fees, other than school fees, if it exceeds 500 square feet. Going forward, we're going to continue not to collect impact fees until we bring the fee schedule for your consideration. So, it's not going to result in any immediate change in our practices. Owner occupancy, a lot of communities, I don't know about a lot, but many communities have owner occupancy requirements, requiring the owner of the parcel to live in either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit. We've never had that provision, and now state law says you cannot have that provision, at least until 2025, when that provision is intended to sunset. Owner occupancy can be required for a JADU, though, the junior accessory dwelling, and we'll talk about that in the future here. And then just briefly, rentals and sales. You can rent them, you can rent the ADU separately from the primary, you don't have to rent it all as a unit, that's, that's okay. No short-term rentals, though. State law says no short-term rentals less than 30 days for ADUs. That probably shouldn't affect us, because currently, we don't allow short-term rentals in Cattati unless they are a lodging facility, at either like a hotel or a bed, bed and breakfast, that requires a use permit. And they cannot be sold independently from the primary. So like in San Francisco, you'll see a lot of tenancy and common agreements, where, you know, one house will be divided up into four little pieces, and people will be purchasing those various parts through an agreement, tenancy and common agreement. That can't happen with the ADUs, except for a very specific situation where a nonprofit home builder is involved in the production of the ADU, and it's made only for affordable housing. But there's, it's a new provision within the code. All right, so that's everything that we have to incorporate. And so now we can talk about a couple elective changes for you to consider. I will say, when we talked to the planning commission about all these items, and I'll talk about them all, they decided to go with the recommendations as it was written in the ordinance. So what we're proposing at staff level is kind of consistent with the statute, and that is the unit size based on lot size, but at the minimum, an 850, 1,000 square foot, and that would be for lots for one-half acre or less. So that's what we have to allow, and that's what we're suggesting be the cap for properties less than one-half acre. If, and that's, that's for the ministerial approval. If they wanted to go beyond those size limits, and they could demonstrate they could do it without adverse impacts, there is, we are offering an option for a discretionary design review. So it's not like we've just said, that's it, and there's no way around it. You can go through a discretionary design review process. That would require noticing to neighbors, and it would require public hearing. We chose, and then for lots that are greater than half an acre, up to the maximum, you could go up to the 1,200 square feet, is what we're, what we're proposing. We can, we selected the half acre because it aligns with our very low residential density and residential density, so it wasn't arbitrary, it was kind of consistent with how our zoning breaks up minimum lot sizes. And then just for your consideration, when you're thinking about this, you can consider a range between basically the 850, 1,000 cap, or, or the 1,200 cap. So you could apply the 850, 1,000 all across the whole city, or you could say, you know what, just forget the 850, the 800, everybody can do 1,200 square feet. So that's, that's the range that you have for consideration. Also, we could eliminate the design review option for lots less than half an acre, and they just must follow the standard. And then in considering that, what I would, essentially, I'm recommending what we propose and not the 1,200, because we start to look at land coverage issues, which results in and not the 1,200, because we start to look at land coverage issues, which results in groundwater recharge impacts, stormwater runoff becomes more greater, trees, more trees are cut down, there's less landscaping, less open space, and the privacy of neighbors is decreased. So we're recommending the 850-1,000 for less than half an acre, 1,200 for over half an Height, we're proposing that if you are developing in those little setback areas where previously you weren't allowed to develop in, that you are limited to the 16-foot height limit. That allows for a one-story with a peak roof, maybe an attic space, probably not two living, not two living floors. And then if you are outside those setback areas, so you're where, you know, development is okay, then we're suggesting, go ahead, you can go to the maximum height limit within that zoning district. That's a little bit different than what we had in the past, where we limited all ADUs to 20 feet. So it's actually, it allows for taller ADUs. I think the reason we approached it that way is sometimes you're developing on top of a garage or a second-story ADU, and this would allow for that development without any running into conflicts with the 20-foot range. So you have the option, you could allow for ADUs, you know, as tall as you'd like in those setback areas. We're recommending that with the 16-foot is sufficient. And then just to remind you, we do currently have the 20-foot, so you could, you could apply that to ADUs going forward as well. Some things to consider is the bulk enassing of the units and how it would affect the neighborhood, as well as, again, privacy of the neighbors. And privacy comes up a lot, because that's one of the big issues that you statewide with ADUs. And so kind of proactively to address what's going to probably result in some privacy issues. If you're building in those setback areas where we previously did not allow development, we're suggesting that any window that's facing an adjacent property within that setback area either be clear story, which means six feet, six and a half feet high from the finished floor to the sill of the window, so you can't look in at your neighbors, or it's opaque, permanently opaque windows. And those would only apply to those windows within the setback area, so that they, you know, they can get some natural sun from their other windows, but, and if they wanted to vary from that standard, you know, that would be the standard for ministerial approval. If they wanted to vary, again, there's a design review option for them, requires notification of neighbors, requires a public hearing. So some options for you to consider, different from us, is that we don't have window restrictions, that people can build what they want to build. Or you could lower the clear story height to five and a half feet, I don't see any reason to do that. Or again, you could eliminate the design review option to allow variance from the standard. And then I guess, you know, to consider the internal lighting of the ADUs, the privacy of neighbors, and emergency egress, which is why we are, I saw some communities that just said clear story, but I'm concerned that that would cause emergency egress problems. This is where someone has to get out of a window during a fire, for example, and bedrooms are required to have egress. So that's why we're recommending the opaque or clear story option, one of the two. And then the other elective change we can talk about is whether or not you want to consider an owner occupancy requirement for a junior accessory dwelling. This is a 500-square-foot maximum within the existing home with possibly a shared bathroom. Our options are, we're proposing not to require it, that it's, that it's difficult to monitor and enforce that kind of option. And also, it's not terribly unlike some of the housing that we have today, where people have roommates, and especially when we have a lot of college kids that live within Cattati. This is a type of living situation that's not uncommon in Cattati, for people to share some bathrooms or kitchens or so. We didn't think it was necessary. I will say that this was probably the one item that was debated the most at the planning commission, and we did have a planning commissioner that felt strongly that there should be an owner occupancy requirement. And it went back and forth, there was four of them there, and ultimately, they decided not to go with the owner occupancy requirement. If we did go that route, we would probably look to do some sort of guide restriction, so that it would always be disclosed upon sale, you know, that there is an owner occupancy requirement for those ADUs. How we could actually enforce it, it would, it would have to be complaint-based, and still even that would be, I think, pretty difficult. And then also, like I mentioned, there are some clarifying changes. I'm not going to belabor this. These are definitions. There's some new ones in there. We eliminate carriage house, we define efficiency unit, floor area, junior accessory dwelling, living area, passageway, public transit, and tandem parking. In some cases, we're just actually referring back to the government code itself, because they're constantly changing the definition. So rather than us changing our code, every time they decide to change the definition, there's where you can find it. And with that, our recommendation is to take the public testimony, review the information, and make a motion to adopt the ordinance. And that ordinance is on page 239 of your packet. However, in response to the letter that I received from California's for homeownership, they had five bullet points, I think it was five. One of them, we felt was a valid point that we should probably address right now, and that was the, we had previously had a maximum of two bedrooms in that. That's a holdover, actually, from our old ordinance, and it's just not even applicable today. And there might be a legal issue with even counting bedrooms like that. So we're recommending striking it, and the ordinance that I placed on the table in front of you shows that strikeout language and some renumbering. That's the only change that we're proposing. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. So bringing back to council, are there any questions on this side of the dice? Yes, Councilwoman Burdell-Lossick?
Yes, questions. I'm going to kind of work my way backwards, because I had more notes at the end. So going back to windows under elective changes, and you were saying six and a half-foot clear story window. The way I interpret or opaque, does that mean then it can go higher than six and a half feet from the ground floor?
Well, sure, sure. I mean, the idea is that we want the bottom of the window to be no lower than six and a half feet.
Bottom of the window?
The bottom of the, to be no lower, so that, are you following? So the idea is so that you, being inside your home, can't look into your neighbor's backyard unless you're standing on a stool or something out your window.
Right, so, so when you say opaque, but does that change the height?
No, so the opaque allows you, and this is good to hear this, but if you could, it's either clear story or opaque.
Or, okay.
That's, pardon? Which, well, yeah, if you wanted to go, if you wanted a lower window, lower than the six and a half feet, it would have to be an opaque window.
That was my question.
Okay.
So it could be lower than six and a half feet.
It can be lower, but it would be required to be opaque.
All right. You can follow up?
So if, if a window is starting at six and a half feet, generally speaking, rooms are eight-foot tall, that means you have a window like this, right?
Yeah.
And how does that work with the egress getting in and out in a bedroom?
That's why we have the option for the opaque window, is so that you don't have to have it at six and a half feet. You have an option, and that's the opaqueness.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's what that is.
John? Not a problem. I'll have a couple, just a couple more like that. Has, do you know if HCD has weighed in on this letter that we got this afternoon?
No, they haven't. And were they reference HCD's interpretation? I will say, that's an interpretation from 2016, and that statute section read very, very differently than it reads today, so I don't, I don't agree. They haven't weighed in on this aspect, though.
I would just add, multiple jurisdictions adopting ADU ordinances are getting the exact same or very similar letter, and we're very confident that our ordinance is compliant with the law.
Right, plus you have to go through another sort of approval anyway, right, through HCD?
Right, right. So they'll be looking at our ordinance and, yeah.
That's great. I probably spent too much time reading their letter and starting to get, oh, boy, here we go. Parking, required parking. You know, we're going to dig a big old hole for ourselves if all of a sudden, and are you saying this is now, as part of the state law and the rewriting of these six bills alone that were introduced in 2019, that parking is not going to be, well, there's not going to be any required parking? So you've got, in a, in a single family of the residents, you've got a garage, let's say, that could, in theory, accommodate two vehicles, and if you convert that garage, you don't need, so that's more on-street parking, and what is that going to do? It's going to fill this room with angry people, and rightly so. I mean, do we not have any alternative to deal with this? It seems a little outlandish after, you know, after what we've seen over the years at Santero. And I'm not saying we have all these multiple Santeros, but we could potentially develop more of those scenarios.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I.
Kind of a rhetorical question, but.
It is, it's almost a statement, because we don't have, no, we can't do anything about the parking. It's, they're very clear about that, that you can't require the parking replacement for garage conversion, and we can't require the additional one.
So regardless of whether we have any kind of a public process, like, let's say we want to bring it back to design review, or planning, or whomever, it doesn't matter, does it? The state is telling us, and what I'm getting out of all of this, not that it's a horrible thing, but again, we're being told, we don't really care about, you know, all your local policies and laws that you people as a community have developed over the years, here's what you're doing now, live with it, because we need more housing. That's kind of the impression I'm getting out of this.
And that's a correct impression, yeah. And you're going to probably see it in other housing laws that are coming. A lot of the development around transit, for example, is having very similar, you know, requirements, like you can't have the parking requirements, or they're much reduced. There is a country worldwide trend to reduce parking requirements. So in the here, you're seeing it basically being enforced on this end.
And I would just add, this is the first of many changes that are going to be coming before the council and the planning commission regarding housing, and many of them will have a similar vein of less discretion, more state mandates, unfortunately.
That's really unfortunate, yeah, it is. All right, that's it for now, thank you.
Councilwoman Burdell?
So, the multi-unit ADUs. So you gave some pretty good examples of L-section, how that might work. So talk to me a little bit about how something like this might work, say, in windmill farms. Those have like little areas, and how would that work?
Yeah, so exactly. So windmill farms, yeah, the way I think HCD would interpret the law, where windmill farms are individual units, but they would probably view it as a larger PUD, multifamily development. That's likely how they would interpret it, I think. So in that case, you could see a couple other little units pop up that resemble very much the existing units. I think a scarier proposition is you could see all those carports converted to ADUs, up to 25% of the number of the units that are actually existing there today. So.
So, because they own the carport? I mean, that's a little frightening, you could have like a mishmash of, you know, one here, not one here.
Are the carports individually owned? Typically, they're in common ownership, so it would be hard for them to pull that off unless they got together as an HOA and decided, wow, we should redevelop these as second units.
I would agree. So the interesting thing is, you're more likely to see this in non-condominium projects. So windmill farms are individually owned units.
Right.
So it's unlikely that the HOA is going to vote to eliminate their own covered parking in favor of developing some additional housing. Where you're more likely to see this is existing apartment projects that are not individual ownership units, where the landlord or property owner is going to try to add a couple additional units, and they absolutely could convert covered parking in those apartments. And JP included it in the language, and I saw some eyebrows raised. The statute mentions boiler rooms specifically, just as an example of they're looking for any additional square footage for housing.
So then can I throw out another example, and you tell me if, so over just Marsh Way there, there's apartment complexes, and there's all that parking against the street. So you're telling me that all those parking spots along the street that are covered parking could all become individual units?
Yeah, it has to be a structure, and so.
It is a structure with the.
So, yeah, you can't just convert surface parking, but I do believe it allows for carport conversion, yeah, up to 25% of the number of units, right?
Wow, that's scary, okay. All righty, this is going to be fun. So on the elective options, help me a little bit on the 28-foot limit. When I think of a lot of people doing ADUs and things like that, you think about people putting a unit up above the garage.
Right.
I mean, that's a pretty common thing for people to do. So wouldn't increasing that to allow for the 28-foot be helpful in that, in that manner, rather than trying to have people force them into a backyard and hit the 16-foot?
I think you're right, yes. And that's why we are recommending that if you meet your setbacks, which any home in a garage that's existing today will, because they've been built within those setbacks, that you do be allowed to go up to the height limit of the zoning district, which is typically about 28 feet, as opposed to imposing the 20-foot height limit, which might end up with some really poorly designed second-story ADUs, you know, like with a weird flat roof or something on a cable house.
So for our community, based upon the likelihood of the housing stock we have, for instance, the L-section, it would make more sense to us to have something like that so that people can do this over their garages?
That's right, that's right.
That's all for now, I'm, I'm sick to my stomach. We're slowly digesting all of this, yes.
Never mind.
Okay, so I'll look inside of the dice for any comments at this point, or questions.
So to piggyback on what Councilwoman Harvey talked about, if you're going to go over the garages up to a maximum of 28 feet, and it's going to be predicated on the size of the square footers that you're putting in, so if it's over 850, then you could go up to theoretically 28 feet height?
Yeah, it's not predicated on anything, really. I mean, you could, you, you can do the 850 to 1,000 if they're doing a two-bedroom or more. And in any case, you could go up to the 28 feet, if you're within your setbacks. Does that make sense? Or maybe I didn't understand your question.
Well, if you were to say we would allow up to 28 feet height on those, would you also have to allow for, if it were a detached ADU?
If they met the setbacks, that would be okay.
Theoretically, you could have a long, narrow, four feet away from the fence, running the length of the yard, four feet from the back fence, 28 feet high.
No.
The main residence?
No, that's where you can't do it, because now you're within, you're in those setback areas, and if you're in that setback area, then you're limited to 16 feet in height.
And please don't give the state the idea.
No, I just thought it would look really clunky.
Yeah, it would, yeah.
Exactly, human dog run.
Thank you for that question.
I had another question. So allowance of an 800-square-foot ADU must allow for at least 800-square-foot ADU irrespective of coverage, open space, or floor area. And then it goes. And then it goes on to say, changes to comply with state law, no development impact fees for ADUs under 750 square feet.
Right.
But we have to allow up to 850.
Correct.
So, so if they're at 749, no fees?
No fees.
Those were my primary questions.
They don't, you know, they could build a 400, they can build one as small as 150 square feet. That's basically as small as you can go and still meet the building code. Up to 1,200, pardon? Do it as. Oh, yeah, very tiny house. We do require, but having said tiny houses, there is a provision that they do be put on foundations. So these trailer tiny homes would not be ADUs allowable, ADUs. They have to be foundation-based structures.
But they could be brought in and placed on a foundation.
Yes. Sure, absolutely.
So they can be attached to a foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lammon.
All right. One question to begin with. We were talking, I wanna thank you for your work, because people often ask, what is planning busy doing? We're not building this much wall. Now you know. And this is what the type of thing that drops all the time, it seems like, the last few years from the state, so you can see the level of complexity to this work. I appreciate your efforts to protect, obviously, public safety and traffic at Santero, but also privacy in general, which is a big concern for people with ADUs. Speaking to what Councilmember Harvey brought up, the clear story, are they required either a six-foot height or unclear window? That would work, I can see, where you have relatively flat surface, that would mean that you can't peer out into somebody's yard, and somebody can't peer into your house. Does this take into account any height differences? Because all of a sudden, if you're building on a hill, what you're proposing here isn't really going to do the job.
No, it does not. No, this is simply for, I guess the simple answer is no. This is only for the ministerial approval process, so.
I'm wondering if it could be modified somehow to take into account line of sight and include height differences, because that's the purpose.
Yeah, no, I know what you're after.
Because I think it's a really good thing what you came up with.
It has to be completely objective, the standard, and that's where, maybe Noah has something to say.
Well, I would just add, we have to allow ADUs up to 16 feet tall within four feet of the property line. So that's a mandate from the state. So what we're trying to do is mitigate the potential impacts from that mandate by addressing it through windows. And we don't have the flexibility to, to limit the four-foot setback or the 16-foot height, regardless of slope, or those other criteria that we may have in our code, such as lot coverage.
I was thinking the only thing left is in a situation where you have, because of a height mismatch, even with a clear-story window, there's still a clear line of sight that impacts the privacy, whether it's the current residence or the new residence, that you might be able, in those circumstances, just require it not be, it be opaque. Just a suggestion. I don't know if we can get there, but anything you can do to protect privacy, I think, is valuable, because that's certainly one of the problems that this is gonna bring. You know, getting back to the whole question of parking, was there any concern expressed in any way during this process about the impacts this is going to have in the public, the look and feel, and frustration with life in most communities in this region? I think I get the move towards, I get that there's a, an interest in reducing car usage. That's a direction I can see some value in going in. And I get ADUs, much more than some other proposals for building, actually will provide some lower-cost housing that actually could help with the people who really need help with housing. That makes sense to me. But forcing people out of their cars when there's no viable replacement right now doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And there's, at this point, there's no legislative interest or noise whatsoever, or any assessment period for this to see, because I suspect, like, some, I think, of the audience pictures and likes of my colleagues have said, this is not that far down the line, gonna be very problematic for some neighborhoods.
Certainly, there was a lot of talk about that. It was coming through, you know, folks, cities, and the League of Cities, and, you know, and other advocates for local control of housing development. These are the, these are the issues that we wrestle with all the time. Not some legislature's never been to the city of Cattati telling us, you know, how we should regulate parking. So it's frustrating. What we can do, and what we are going to do, we've already talked about Santero Way, but we're clearly gonna be watching and tracking and monitoring the impacts that are associated with this. And if it comes that it does start presenting safety or traffic issues, which are some of the other issues, then we'll probably recommend changing the zoning in those areas.
This might be something we could even work on through the City Managers Group, I think, and see if this is something, call us, is county-wide, there's an interest, you know, if there's enough interest behind it, might be something one of our local legislators might actually dare move in the opposite direction and carry a bill for us down the line. Who knows? With that, I'll lead with the one piece of good news I'm sure we're all happy about, is that boiler rooms everywhere are going to be rejoicing at their new popularity and value. I'm very happy for boiler rooms.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
So what about commercial property? What about the industrial area? Can these things pop up over there, too?
So, only mixed, only, only in the, all of our commercial areas are zoned for mixed use. So if there's a mixed-use development, so, you know, maybe commercial on the bottom, residential above, those then become multifamily, they would be eligible for an ADU under our ordinance, and under state law. We don't allow housing in the industrial park area, so, no. No housing in the IG or the CI districts, so Blodgett Street, you know, order Aaron.
So, but if in a commercial mixed-use area, if, let's say, they provide parking garage or parking carport in that mixed-use, that parking unit could get turned into an ADU?
I think there's a potential, there's some aspect of it, but also you're talking about commercial parking there as well, which this doesn't give you a pass to commercial parking, so it'd be a little more of an argument with us before we would just accept it as a ministerial approval.
Yeah, I would just.
Just trying to say how far they can, you know, push this envelope.
And that's a good point to think about. One of the things is, as we start to see some new development, which almost all new development in Cattati is going to be mixed-use, it's often common to see requests to bundle parking, commercial and residential parking, getting dual use. That would preclude the conversion, in theory, if that space served the commercial use during the day and the residence at night. So that's one way to be thoughtful about how we look at some development moving forward. And then similarly, if it were condos, so individually owned, a lot less likely to be converted in the future. So as we start to look at some of these projects, if they're for-sale projects, individual ownership units, that would address some of those things. And then finally, you know, if it's a newly-built unit or newly-built project, the developer's pro forma is gonna cover the cost as it's proposed. So there likely would be a significant amount of time before any additional pressures would come forward to try to convert some of the amenities that are provided to that apartment project, if it were built.
It just really puts another layer of things we need to look at and consider when we consider some of these multi-use developments, is what looks like development A right now, we really need to think of what else could happen to it by the way it was developed. And I'm assuming then that, so for instance, the cottages out there, that all of those garages could become ADUs out there? They all have garages?
They, I, and I'm not sure if they're attached or detached.
They are attached.
There's like two, there's two that are attached, and then it's two, 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 right? Like, each one ensuring one common wall, I think that's the way it is at cottages? Yeah, I don't know, I'd have to wrestle with it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
All righty, then.
I think there's a potential, though, for conversion. We'd probably treat it as the multifamily and limit it to 25, as opposed to everybody being to convert their garage.
So then how do you, how do you wrestle with something like that if it's, if it's only 25, and it's like me, too, me, too, me, too? You know, I mean, I want one, I, you know, how do you, is it a lottery? Is it a first-in, first, you know? How do you wrestle with that?
So you're, you're seeing what we've been dealing with, and it's frankly, you know, a product of 19 housing bills being passed in a very short amount of time, and not a lot of time being granted to how it's all gonna roll out and be effective in each town as it, as it moves through the process.
Yeah, because part of the problem is, is once they're there, it's not like you can take them back.
No.
So.
Councilmember Blossom.
I would just like to add a little bit more to the insanity, if I could. I thought, JP, you might have mentioned something, but I don't wanna put words in your mouth, that it was something Councilmember Lammon said, that if it got to that point, we might consider some kind of a rezoning. Am I putting words in your mouth?
No, that's essentially what I said. So if we, let's say, for example, yeah, we started to see parking impacts in neighborhoods, and we could really point to the fact that it was due to ADUs, as opposed to college housing or something like that, then yeah, we would probably say, we'll probably revisit our zoning. And there has to be some sort of traffic impact. We know people get really emotional. I mean, we really know that here in Cattati, if we consider what happened here a couple months ago. People get sensitive about parking. But if it really starts to create public safety or traffic issues, then we have the authority under the state law to prevent development of ADUs in that area. So we would look at a rezon, yeah.
And so when you're, when you're speaking of rezoning, I, this, it was something I had written.
But I, by rezoning, I mean, we would not make it a permissible use in a particular zoning district.
Okay. I won't tell you.
Or a particular area, yeah.
That's fine. I won't tell you what I thought that meant. It's too embarrassing. I'll let it go. Thank you.
Okay. So are we done the list with questions for the moment?
No, there'll be more.
There'll be more. Okay. But we're okay for moving on to public comment? Of course, go ahead. So on the owner occupancy, I understand what you're saying. That gets kinda hard, and we don't know right now. But we could also then be seeing a lot more speculative buying, just to be able to buy homes, and nobody's looking, and I'm just gonna, you know, buy six or eight of these, and I'm gonna add all these ADUs on there, and, and I don't care about the parking, and I don't care about the privacy, I don't care about anything, because I don't have to live there. So it's sort of a double-edged sword there. You could be used, if you will.
Right. Yeah, that concern was also raised at the Planning Commission, specifically the speculative, potential for speculative ownership without proper consideration to the neighbors and the neighborhood.
Well, especially since, you know, we do, we are right by the college. I mean, there's already, I mean, we've heard, you know, 100 times the complaints out in Santero because of all of the purchases that are made there, and they're, you know, renting people two to a room out there. So this is kind of gonna put it front and center in some of our regular neighborhoods, which could become, you know, real problematic real quick. So that one's, that one's hard. I mean, I agree with you, there's lots of houses where there's roommates, I get it. But you were kind of limited, and so generally speaking, they were three- or four-bedroom houses, and, you know, you could kind of live with that. Now you're saying, you can take a three- or four-bedroom house, and I can add, you know, an ADU on the garage, and I can add one in the backyard, and that, you know, you won't need to have a junior ADU, because you're already filling up the rooms, you know, with, with people. It just kind of, and no parking.
All right. Well, just, I wanna clarify a couple things. One, we can only have the owner occupancy requirement with the junior accessory dwelling.
Okay.
We cannot have it with an ADU. The state has said no to that for the next five years. Now.
So do we have to, like, revisit that in five years, or do we have to have it there and it doesn't take effect till five years? How would that, how does that five-year thing work? Or do we not know yet?
Well, I was looking at it as we would revisit it in five years, because you never know if the sunset actually sunsets.
Right.
But we could, because the way.
Sun could rise again.
The state law has structured it, that it would sunset on 2025. There's no reason why we couldn't structure our ordinance the same way if that was the choice of the city council. I also do wanna say, I did mention that it would take a deed restriction probably to do that. I know that sounds scary, but we're already gonna be requiring deed restrictions with junior accessory dwelling, so it won't be difficult to just add another element to the deed restriction that has an owner occupancy requirement, as well as the way you can't sell it off separately like a tick, so.
Yeah, it's hard, because we have to try and protect some of these people that are kind of already in their homes as best we can. You know, not everybody wants to turn their home into, you know.
And not everybody wants to see three homes go right up next to them.
Right, yeah.
In their backyard.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So with that, I will open it up to the public. Is there anybody? Yes, Ms. Aldrin.
This is the topic of the day for me, because I spent the day at Sonoma County Bar Association's New Housing Laws Seminar. And they have a really good idea of what's happening. The state is gonna come in, and they're going to, they have so many caveats for the emergency housing, that it is gonna take over the local level. And my question is, why are we even going after, why don't we let it default to the state rules? And, because they're very strict, too, and you're gonna be subject to them. And it just seems like a lot of extra work to do for our small city. I don't know anybody who has money unless somebody speculates and invests to put, we've got mortgages in the 3,000, you know, we've got high mortgages, so high rent costs. There's not gonna be ways to, I just don't see a lot of people putting ADUs in. They don't have the money. They're paying their mortgage, they're paying their rent, they're not gonna, unless they're gonna do it as a rental unit. And also, this is just one of many laws coming through. There's the whole rent cap coming through, which is really, that was, this was like five minutes. That was like half hour. It's, it's, it's like with the, we don't even know if we're the Bay Area's consumer price index, or we're the California. I mean, all the, all the real estate lawyers today were like, this is gonna be hell. And so I don't think this is the biggest one as that the other issues, bills that are coming down, so I don't think we should be, and basically, like, half the places, people aren't gonna even think of it. Mark George is in my neighborhood, we have room, but I haven't seen any, our, because we have little half acres and stuff, I don't see, haven't seen anybody put up an ADU in 10, 15 years. And you don't have great code enforcement on ADUs, because you let the fire-damaged ADU, it wasn't even licensed next door for 17 months. You allowed them to live there illegally. And now you wanna make all these rules, and what about code enforcement? You hardly have any. You have, you don't even have your own code enforcement officer anymore. So I just wanna, that's all I have to say. I did learn a lot today.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Berettich, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah. I'd like to thank the staff. It's a very good report to a very complicated issue. I wanna thank the city council for asking some very important and interesting questions. There's a few issues here, you know, the state of California has been suffering under a million, a few million people who have exited this state. They're leaving. And, you know, the state just wants these people to leave. These are taxpayers, these are producers, the intelligentsia, and so on and so forth. So there's that interesting angle, but I just want to leave you tonight with the thought that this is what happens when your affordable housing becomes unaffordable. This is what happens when we have decades of rent control, which is like dropping a bomb in Cattati when it comes to housing. This is what happens when you set up urban growth boundaries to try to stop growth and sprawl. This is what happens when you have open borders and sanctuary cities, and millions of illegals from all over the world flooding into. from all over the world flooding into the state of California. California with open arms. So here we are. What a conundrum. A desperate and ugly housing shortage that Democrats have brought upon us and our Democrat leadership in Sacramento. You all need to do some real soul searching on your participation and what you've done to be a part of this mesh that we're in right now.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to have a public comment on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. We have more. Which direction to go?
Can we go through the elective items one by one when we get to that point? Sorry, Jerk.
Yeah? Like a plan? So, did you-
Well, yeah, I mean, I was, I was actually gonna dive in on some of those that I think are important, that I believe we should keep. As an example, I really think we need that discretionary design review process. I would not say if that's an option, I say that we should have that, because there are, there are situations right now we haven't thought of, right? There's those unintended consequences that are out there, and I just think if we have, if the city has some kind of a review process, albeit we're under very tight restrictions with all of this, I really think that's an important-
Based on-
We got our video started.
Based on what you said, I want to offer something that maybe is clarifying. The design, the discretionary design review option was only if they, that the applicant did not want to go with the standard that we had.
Right.
So for, okay, yeah, so it won't be, most cases, they're just gonna be coming, it's gonna come over the counter as a building permit, and if it meets the standard, it's approved, no, okay.
And I don't disagree with what Ms. Alderman said. You know, we may not, I think we go right, at least I do, I go to right to the worst case scenario. Tomorrow, there's gonna be 30 applications coming in, right? I know that's not gonna happen. I know, let's all relax. None of that's gonna happen, but I think you need to have in place the policies should something go awry, in the sense, like I said, we don't know what's gonna come at us. We don't know how many, we don't know when. I think there's a lot of small parcels, like the one I live on, that probably couldn't accommodate something like this in my backyard. And I hope my kids are listening, because it won't accommodate in my backyard. I just want to be clear.
I think a couple of tiny houses back there. Forget the vegetable garden.
So, you know, to me, I think wherever we can have the ability to take a look at these in depth, whether, you know, and I get that it's, it's in probably fewer of the situations than the norm, I get that, but I really think it's important to have that, because I think it's just one more level that we can say, hold on just a second, that's a little too big, it's a little too high, your window's not high, whatever the case is. So, so I, because that was under, sort of as an elective, that was the first thing that kind of jumped out at me, is like, all of a sudden, we've got all of our legs cut out from under us, we still need to have a say in some of this wherever we can, and that's one of them. Now, do we want, I mean, you really want to go through each elective?
Either we sign it on, or we say-
Uh, yeah.
I mean, there's-
Now, may I clarify something? Now, maybe I can get some court before we get into these.
Sure.
Hey, let me turn this on, sorry about that. I want to jump in and just clarify this, too, to make sure I'm understanding it right. What I saw, and perhaps I misunderstood, the design review process in this case was for, in case there was a situation where somebody wanted to live with the older setbacks, but go higher than the 850 or 1,000 foot height, this would give them potentially the option if we chose that. So the point, I guess I'm saying is that having design review, this case is only going to allow people to exceed that height and make something even bigger with potentially more room, more parking needs. Granted, the setback might be somewhat more valuable, but give me a sense of what this is really doing, because I'm not seeing it as anything that gives us an extra level of control, reducing the size of this. It's only an option in a specific case where we could let people have something higher than 16 feet, as long as they're farther away.
While we're talking about the unit size, this is the one elective based on lot size.
Yes.
So it doesn't really get into the height at this particular point. If we didn't have the law at all, if we just went with the state, anybody could come in and do 1,200 square feet, we couldn't say a darn thing about it. That's part of the reason why we want the law. So, four lots under 800, or under half an acre, you have the limit of 850 or 1,000, based on the number of bedrooms that the ADU would contain, and that comes out of the If you were on one of those lots that was under half an acre, and you wanted to build a 1,200 square foot ADU, and you felt like you could do it, we have an option for you to approach us through a discretionary design review process that allows you to go between 850, 1,000, up to 1,200. So it gives you a few hundred square feet to play.
So rather than giving us more control, it just opens the door to a potentially bigger ADU?
That's what it does. It does, but it, but it makes it a public process where we now will be notifying the neighbors of the ADU development, so, you know, and we'd be having this debate about the potential impacts of a larger, in a public setting. And we could condition-
Still, more than likely, people, even if there's some back and forth and give and take, it would probably arrive through that process as something more than the initial-
Right. It does give you more-
So it still just means more ADU.
Well, that, see, that wasn't my interpretation.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
My interpretation would have been more that the city would then say, well, you may not be able to build that 1,200 square foot ADU because, and if there's legitimate reasons.
Well, we can do it by row without having that dynamic, is the point, it would be, it would be out, so. I, I just, in general, before we get into it, I put a note here rather than, because there were a lot of options there, and I guess the general sense I had from this is I, since we've been taking a really big move towards really increased density and much less local control, and not exactly a willing one, this is something we all are being forced to do, then in general, I'm kind of leaning towards not voluntarily giving any more than I have to at this point. That seems to be the direction I'd like to go. I'm really not interested in anything that tends to allow more, since we've made such a huge move to the other side here. It just seems like a natural balance to try and hold the line wherever we have the limited option to do so. So that would be just my comment in general, as we go through the options, whichever ones seem to give us the chance to hold this, unless there's some good logical reason, the staff sees where it would be beneficial perhaps to allow that, that would be my direction, what I'd like to see.
So there's, the most restrictive thing we could do is, one, eliminate the design review option, which is what I think I'm hearing you say. And then we also could apply the 850, 1,000 to all properties, regardless of their size.
Exactly.
Even if they're four acres, you still have the 850, 1,000 maximum to your ADU.
This also gives us some room to move, because as you suggested, the next few years, it should be an iterative process. We'll see what the back and forth is with the state. So I'd prefer not to, seeing as I've already had two pockets, my two front pockets picked, I'd hate to empty my wallet, too, tonight. Just a thought. Thank you. That clarified that for me, I wanted to make sure I was understanding it.
All right. So let me go back, then, then I will say I misunderstood, because I, I thought keeping a process available through staff would be more restrictive. It doesn't sound like that's the case. Okay, then, everything I said, strike. Out the window.
So striking.
It's only, it's only more restrictive as compared to, if we didn't adopt the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Got it. Yeah.
Well, and if I can just clarify, too, my, guessing that all of the proposals that you've made throughout have, have more to do with us keeping more control rather than less, because you were wanting to sort of design it specifically for Catati, or is it just more of it made more sense for our town?
Yeah, I mean, it was to, yeah, suggest Catatify it.
Yes.
As well as provide options for the residents where they could demonstrate that they could do more than the most restrictive thing, you know? We wanted to keep the door open for folks, which is partially what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay. Understood.
I would just add, we wanted to give the decision makers, the council and the planning commission, the option to allow a little bit larger units on the larger parcels, or potentially even on smaller parcels, if that was the direction that the council and the planning commission wanted to go.
Okay. Thank you. So did you want to, did you have a question as well, or did you want to go to the next one, or?
Well, so, I think we're on item number one, which is the unit size based on lot size, right? Okay. So you're proposing the 850, 1,000 for lots less than half acre, and discretionary design review if someone wants to exceed that, and for lots that are greater than a half acre, 1,200 square foot would be allowed, and that that aligns with RVL and RR zoning districts, right? So, are we, I mean, I think that that is acceptable, and there is a very big distinction between individual, you know, lots and lots that are greater than half acre. I mean, we don't have a whole lot of them, but we do have them, and I could see that they might want, because they have the room, to do a bigger ADU. So that does give us a little bit of discretion for those smaller number of lots that we have within the community. So I like the proposed on item one. I can live with that.
Yeah, I, I understand, and I see the logic. I fall on the other side of the argument. I look at most of those neighborhoods and find that most of the people who've invested or lived, they're our chosen to live there, even if they're renting, value the fact that there's some openness, and have purposely done that. 1,200 square feet is not just a big ADU, that's a house. That was my first house in Petaluma. That was my wife and I, two kids, and a cat, and, and two cars, too. So that's a lot. When you start doing that, and if you have a bunch of half acre lots, which really aren't that terribly big, okay, half acre, but it's half acre or greater, could still be very close to a half acre. That's my concern, is it could be just as problematic. I mean, this isn't something I'm gonna die on hill. If most of my colleagues feel this is okay, it probably is, and that's fine. It's just my first response, and perhaps it's a natural one, to the extremeness of what's being forced us in changing the typical standards of local control we have in the town, is I'm really just loathe to give any more than I have to at this point, that's all. So with that, whatever the group wants to do, I'm-
And you could also have a junior ADU within that 1,200?
Yeah, yes.
In addition?
In addition to that.
And that's not even counting boiler rooms.
But that's within.
Right.
It's not shared with, a separate detached.
Right.
Still parking.
But, but didn't- Didn't Councilmember Landman just bring up that you were leaning more towards the elimination of the design review process?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's not what's in that first extended bullet under number one, the proposal.
Right.
It's the opposite. That's down in the, under options, right? So before, we just kind of-
Well, but I think he's wanting to get rid of codes.
Yeah, I just, I've, I said, I think Councilmember Harvey was just responding to my suggestion, my personal take, was I'd prefer she just give as little as possible on all these, and that's why she asked me on this particular issue, so.
On the same page. Got that. But how are you reading that bullet under proposed, the one after the 850 slash 1,000 square feet?
Well, he wants all of that to go away, because he wants the state-
Okay, but I thought you said, okay, but my understanding was, what's listed under the proposed was fine.
It's fine for me.
Okay. And is, is it not getting through to me, or what? Because I thought that line, this line here-
Yeah.
Is what Mark was saying, and I'm agreeing with-
Oh, no, he wants all of this to go away. He wants to stay with the state one that basically says 1,000 is required, right?
Right, right, the range.
Yeah, so no, it doesn't matter how, what size your lot-
I didn't, I didn't hear you say you wanted to strike.
It's 850 to 1,000 citywide, yeah.
I'm better now, okay? Just want to make sure we're on the right page.
If I spread more, any opinions on the specific?
If it's over a half acre, I don't know that another 200 square feet is gonna make a big difference in that regard. So I, I'm neutral on that either way. Yeah, I don't see a ton of, a ton of these going out immediately, so I don't know that it's gonna be that great a concern.
Okay. And have you formed an opinion now that you're clear on the two proposed options?
My opinions are done for the time being. Thank you very much. For just not to let-
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we need to go through each one, then, and then see if we agree, and then come up with something cobbled at the end? Clear? Okay.
So two.
So page eight, elective change number two, height. Anybody feel strongly about the proposed versus the alternative options?
Well, I, I do think that for units that are gonna go over garages, that we're gonna need that 28 foot. I think, other than that, you're really forcing, you would be forcing the elimination of a garage, to turn that garage into a unit, rather than the possibility of putting an ADU above the garage. Just saying. If there's anything that we can do to keep that garage, that's-
It better say that that's above the garage? Because if you just say 28 foot garage ADU, you're gonna get a lovely two story ADU.
I-
Yeah.
Written. Sorry. You could get a two story ADU the way it's written. But in addition to allowing it above the garage, it allows for any second story addition to be, become an ADU. So maybe you don't want it above the garage, you, you know, you'd rather have it above your living room-
You want it in the middle of the house.
Or something, you know, and, and then they have their access. So basically, it allows for a second story at any point in the house, and it would allow for a second story, a two story ADU if constructed that way.
But couldn't a person come in and remodel their home and put a second story on any, any single story house here?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's why, that's why we went the path that we did, is like, look, you're meeting the setback standards, you're meeting the zoning standards. We didn't feel like it was necessary to artificially decrease the ADU.
And the 20 foot was artificially putting a cap on it?
The 20 foot lives in the code currently, and the idea behind allowing the height limits for a single family home to apply to an ADU addition is both, is to accommodate what an addition could do if it wasn't an ADU, and also to ensure architectural compatibility. So if you had some arbitrary height on an existing structure, you could get some odd designs trying to meet that height limit, rather than trying to match the design of the house.
That must be why I've seen some odd over the garage things. Yeah. Because eight feet, you know, with the pitch of the roof does limit you, I think.
Can, can I ask that question? What's the setback from the sidewalk to the, to the house?
It depends on the zoning district, but it's typically about 20 feet.
Okay.
25 in some of the more rural areas.
Front and rear.
Yeah, the letter, the letter is suggesting you can build ADUs in the front yard, and we're saying, no, we don't agree with that.
Let's hope it doesn't go to the-
Well, that was, that was gonna be my question, could it, how potential ADU come up in the front yard if it met the setbacks?
Well, we're arguing that it couldn't meet the setbacks by being in the front yard, because the, the front yard is the setback area. The letter that we received, this person is arguing that you could build an ADU in the front yard.
As long as it was four feet away from the-
No, you build it right up to the sidewalk.
So, so we don't agree with the interpretation that's in the letter. And, and the city attorney's office has chimed in on it, and they feel that we're on secure ground with our ordinance. Obviously, it has to go to HCD for approval. If we're incorrect, we'll come back and let you know. Generally, setbacks for our main house are 20 foot front, 20 foot rear, 10 on the sides. That's generally, I'm sorry, five on the sides. That's generally the case. What we're saying is if your structure, if your proposed ADU meets that, then you follow the same rules as all the, the other parts of the house, the height, all those things. Where the exception comes in, that's mandated by the state, is to do a detached ADU, you can be four feet off the rear or side property lines and go up to 16 feet tall. That, we have no flexibility in that. Our reaction to try to address that is the clear story windows or the opaque windows, to do something to try to mitigate those potential privacy impacts.
I'm comfortable with what's proposed. I, I wanted to ask you, though, to speak to the very last bullet point under elective changes for number two, height. Consider bulk slash massing and privacy of neighbors. What exactly are we talking about here, and what options- What exactly are we talking about here, and what options do we have with that?
Those are just some things I want to make sure you're thinking about as you debate, what option, what electives you want to consider here.
Okay.
The taller, taller structure is going to present more privacy problems, even if you are within your setbacks. But, you know, we all tolerate that when we live in a neighborhood. Also, many of our neighborhoods are single-story. And even though we do have 20 height, 28 height limits, we don't really see a lot of two-story development, second story development. People that will be building ADUs on the second story is going to result in increased bulk enassing of the properties.
So this is why we wound up with a proposal of 16 feet if within setbacks, and then zoning district rules if you're outside?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Good with proposed, okay. And then number three, windows. Anybody have an issue with the proposed versus options?
So long as, stop that. So long as there is no issues with, in case of a fire. I know that was brought up. That's been mitigated, regardless of whether they're six and a half clear stories, six and a half feet clear story.
No, six and a half clear story would not be a proper egress window. And we actually saw that in some other jurisdictions ordinances, which is why we went with the, the option to have an opaque window. So you could still have an emergency egress that, that you can access, you know, sufficiently during a fire. So yes, we've covered that.
Okay.
So the egress issue is a building code issue, so we cannot issue a building permit that doesn't provide that for a bedroom, to have an egress window. If we didn't have the option for the opaque, then what it would do is, it would, it would direct designs to put the bedrooms of the ADUs towards the interior of the yards, outside of those setbacks, so then they could have their lower windows that would provide egress. We don't want to handcuff the creative architects out there. They are trying to do nice designs and fit within the context that they're designing for. So we're trying to provide options while still trying to protect. Because again, when you have these arbitrary, and I don't want to say arbitrary, when you have these relatively restrictive design criteria, you can get some relatively restricted designs.
Because I don't think that they really thought, um, when they were thinking of privacy, but they weren't thinking of egress. I mean, that's probably what they were thinking. They didn't assume that these were going to be bedrooms.
They imagined that all the bathrooms would be the ones that were looking out of their backyards.
Exactly, but that's not necessarily so.
I suspect they'll be changing it.
Well, yeah, they would, it would force the design to put those windows in, right?
Right.
If they had to be clear story, they can be egress.
Right.
So then you're basically putting all your bathrooms next to your neighbors.
Yeah.
And on these opaque windows, can't go out with opaque versus a clear story? You could still open these windows?
The idea is that if it has to be an egress window located in that, then it has to be opaque, so you can't see through it, but you could still open it to get out.
Right.
For safety.
Yeah. Any more questions on the windows? We're good with the proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yay! Look at that.
Four more.
Go team.
Last elective changes, page nine, number four, JAD owner occupancy. So we touched on this briefly, but do you want to discuss it further? Right now, it was the not required, and this is the one that you were saying was attached to the house, so it's only the junior ADU.
It's internal to the house.
Right.
Yeah.
And if I may, what was the argument for supporting owner occupancy?
What was the argument for supporting?
The owner occupied?
Uh, well, the, the concern that I heard from the planning commission is there is a concern, much like Susan raised, where there's speculative nature to it. You know, where someone, or corporate type builders comes in, converts a bunch of stuff and leaves without proper consideration to the neighborhood. And then there's that loss of owner oversight of the property. I mean, you get, you lose that with a rental. But those were the, those were the primary concerns is, you know, maybe that it would result in too much of a change in the neighborhood if we didn't have an owner occupancy.
And we don't require that on rental properties. So, I mean, this is really.
Yeah, I guess the question is.
Not a whole lot different than that.
Well, it's just that this is one of the few places we have some discretionary control. So I guess my question would be, and I think you've kind of answered it, not having this might tend to allow the potential, we don't know really how strong it would or wouldn't be, of speculative ownership. People buying up as many houses as possible, splitting up into JADUs, ADUs as much as possible. Requiring owner occupancy will hopefully limit that a little, and also probably lead to better local control, oversight, those sorts of things. But the thing I heard from the staff production presentation also was a concern about how difficult this would be, which almost had me saying, yeah, this sounds like a nightmare. We can't do it. But then you mentioned, well, we're likely going to deed restrictions and many other things, and that would essentially take care of this.
Well, I don't think it's.
Clarify that for me.
Well, it's the only mechanism I can think of to effectively get at it, but I don't think it would be, this is going to sound contradictory, I don't think it's going to be an effective control method. I mean, I don't know, even if you have a deed restriction, so you sign, you know, you're aware of that at the, the time you purchase, you turn around and you just move right out. And then we'd be dependent on someone complaining about the situation, and then having to go through, you know, the code enforcement process to, to resolve that.
I appreciate the patience from you, and certainly those in the audience, but you know, this is important. I mean, this is the extra work that might actually give some extra modicum of protection to people in Cattati, and I think it's worth taking the time to actually go through this and see what we can actually do. So I appreciate you doing that. I mean, I would lean more towards requiring ownership, except for it sounds like it's a great idea, but it's almost impossible to actually do in practice with what we have here. So with that, unless you guys see a way that makes sense to do it, I tend to agree. I think the proposal is good.
We could come back and revisit this at a later time if we see it start getting out of control, right? I mean, yes, we couldn't do anything about the ones that were already there, but if we.
The way state law is written today, yes, we could come back and revisit this issue.
The way it's written today, great.
That's all I could say.
Okay, so my, by, in my count of the four, we were all comfortable with the proposed, except for the first one, and that, my understanding from Councilmember Lammon was that you were necessarily completely opposed to going with the proposed, it was just something that you were wanting to vet out.
It was not my preference, but that's how it goes. I think I'm going to have to live with it.
Okay. So does that correlate with what everybody else's notes and everything? Okay. All right. So then, staff have what they need?
On, on all four of the elective options.
Yes.
So then the only change, different from the packet, is that we eliminated the requirement that it not exceed two bedrooms, and that's in front of all of you, so make sure your motion reflects that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So anything else before we move to a vote?
So there's nothing. I'd, with great personal reluctance, move a, move an ordinance amending the Cattati municipal code to provide for the development of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in good formance with state law, and I'll personally have state arm twisting.
Second, huh?
You can take that last part off.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, although reluctant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That passes. What's that? Yes. All right. And then I have a request to take a quick bio break, since we're two hours into the meeting, so we'll adjourn in about five minutes. Thank you. Adjourn for, adjourn four or five minutes, yes. Okay. So we'll call the meeting back to order and move on in our interesting patchwork this evening with 11A, establishment of an underground utility district. And for that, I believe, am I turning it to Mr. Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, public works director, city engineer. This item is the formation of an underground utility district, which the city does not do very often. But this has been prompted by, well, I'll get to that. But, uh, basically, an underground utility district uses a Rule 20A allocation to underground existing utilities, these are power lines and telecommunications lines to, to underground within the designated area. So before I get into the presentation, we have figures of the proposed underground utility area on the back table. And then Lizette Burtis is here with us from PG&E. She's their Rule 20A program liaison and has been a tremendous help, leading staff through the process of forming a UUD. So what has prompted this is there is a rarely used provision of the undergrounding program that allows PG&E to reallocate the city's Rule 20A allocation. I'll get to that, what that means later. If, if a, if a city, it real allocates the cities or another agencies that has, does not have an active district, okay? And what that means, so I just had this explained to me. I, I, I always thought that the, the money was sitting there in a bank, it had been coming out of the rates over the 50 year, 53 years since 1967, when the program was formed. But basically, what, what it is, is once a district is, look, let's see, over time, it's like a frequent flyer miles credit. You get, based on the size of your city, there's a bank, it's a sort of a, an account of allocation or work credits to the city, that once UUD is formed, PG&E would then go out and get a loan for that amount of money, and the rate payers would pay off that loan over 30 years or so. I know, complicated. It's, but it's, it's, it's just like alloc, it's called an allocation. It's, it's money that would be spent in the future after this project would be completed. Okay. So copies of the map are available over there. Lizette's here for question. Okay, so, um, all right. So basically, we're, we're here because we want to preserve our funds, or our allocation, rather. And there's another city that is short of work credits, and so they're going out, we've been notified by PG&E that this provision, this rarely used provision is being invoked, whereby they, you know, take, take the, reallocate ours to someone else. And so if it was money, it represents $3,000 for the city. It's not a large amount, but in the great scheme of things, this program does not work very well for small cities, because, for example, Cattati has about 650,000 allocation right now, and when it builds by about $20,000 every year, and that doesn't even keep up with inflation. I'd be willing to bet a, a project goes up by twice that amount, and so every year that goes by, we kind of lose ground. But it's insult to injury if we have $3,000 of that allocation then taken away. So we're forming this district, we're proposing to form this district tonight to preserve our allocation. So the staff received a letter, this notification, just, just in mid-December, that we had until March 12th to form a district and then pass, by passing this resolution, and then giving PG&E that resolution and saying, hey, we have an active district. Okay, so we, we have a very short timeframe. And there are a number of criteria to meet in, in forming a UUD, underground utility district. And the unofficial one is, hey, we've got to make it match the limited funds we have, or the limited allocation credits. I have to catch myself on this, because it's relatively new. But because if, if it's too large, then it's, it's just not feasible. We're limited, we can't just infuse general fund money or other funding, it has to be the work credits to fund the program. And so it's, it's, it's a city block, Charles Street is what we're proposing. And the criteria that's in the Rule 20A language is that the undergrounding will avoid or eliminate an unusually heavy concentration of overhead electric facilities, which is, exists there on Charles Street, just behind Super Burger, that whole length of the street. Number two, that the street or road right of way is extensively used by the public and carries a heavy volume of pedestrian or vehicular, well, vehicles. And that is true of that section. It's within our downtown specific plan area, and it's very much in our downtown, you know, core. So it is used by pedestrians and so forth. Three, that the street or road right of way joins or passes through a civic area or public recreation area or area of unusual scenic interest. And so again, a lot of people that come to visit Cattati, as well as the residents here, frequent the downtown area and in that, Charles Street. The fourth one, it does not meet, uh, Charles Street by our own definition is a local road, not an arterial, and however, we only need to meet one, one of these four criteria, so we're good by meeting the three. So it's a strong candidate, what we've defined. Okay, so some of the implications of forming a district. Typically, it takes five years. Once you form a district, you kind of get in line, so to speak. And it is a PG&E project, so they're the ones that design it and go ahead and acquire right of way, that's not anticipated in this case. They're the ones that go out and contact the residents, the business owners. It's their project. Now, the city can certainly help in that effort, but we're meeting with them, just on coordination meetings, and, and they're actually proceeding with it. Okay, so what happens, you know, because these, these power lines and the telecommunications lines have service connections to the residents and businesses, well, the work credits can be used to underground those service lines up to 100 feet. So anything beyond that would be on the property owners, and then $1,500 for a service panel conversion, because you have a service panel with wires coming from the top, and it has to be converted to, receiving the wires from, from below. All of the, as per the Rule 20A rules by the California Public Utility Commission, the city has notified all of the property owners within the proposed district. And then used our proper noticing requirements, you know, the newspaper, and a certain number of days ahead of the public hearing, which we're to hold tonight. Okay. Now, and then the initial factor is, are the streetlights. So there's PG&E streetlights, and there's City of Cattati-owned streetlights. The work credits can be used for converting the PG&E streetlights, which are the Cobra headlights that are attached to the existing power poles. So they would take care of that with the work credits. The city lights are already undergrounded. We have those decorative streetlights on the south side of Charles Street, and so they're already taken care of. And there'd be no costs for those. And there'd be no costs for those. And the funds, or the work credits cannot be used for funding undergrounding for a private development project. So it's intended for existing areas that have this light, if you will, these pretty unsightly above-ground, you know, wires and so forth. So for example, if a development came in and they looked at our municipal code, which requires undergrounding of utilities along the frontage, these work credits could not be used for that project. Additionally, like along Old Road or Highway, there's high-voltage transmission lines. This program is not intended for those. In fact, they're not eligible. It's for distribution lines, the smaller lines that go into the neighborhoods. And then, of course, it also covers the telecommunications lines. So when you look at the power poles, you see the high lines are the electrical lines and the lower lines are the telecommunications lines. They would underground both and get rid of the power poles. That about sums it up. So the next step is to hold the public hearing and then consider adopting the resolution. And then staff would take that resolution and shoot it off to PG&E so that we preserve our work credits. At this time, I'd be happy to answer, respond to any questions you may have, as well as Lizette. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So right now, as we're looking at the current percentage calculation, it's only $3,000 of our potential allocation. But as I understand it, the total Live Oak request goes up to 554,000. And we have 614,000 and some change in our allocation. So if enough other cities respond prudently, as we seem to be, then this puts us in a position where that could actually increase alarmingly. As a matter of fact, in a worst-case scenario, could it not take most of our allocation if we were unwilling, didn't act on this for some reason?
That's a really good point. This is the second time we've been notified. The first time, Live Oak did not adequately notify everybody, so they had to hit the restart button. So we got a second chance. And just in that process, the percentage went up quite a bit because of the factor you're just talking about, you know. And so it's, the fixed number is 554,000 that Live Oak's looking for. Of course, if it goes to, has to be shared by fewer cities or agencies, then their proportional share goes up.
Yeah, I think that pretty much tells the tale. I'd certainly like to thank the City of Live Oak for creating a huge mess and a Christmas present for all the cities, as well as, I'm sure, PG&E, last thing anybody want dropped on them. But I appreciate the notification and the help for staff with this, too, very much. Thank you for laying that out for us.
Any comments or questions for this man?
I did have some questions. You said that if we do create this Underground Utility District, anything in line that we might want to do would probably be after so many people in front of us, or so many cities in front of us in a five-year, you know, window, so to speak. What happens if PG&E fails to exist like it does currently? Do we know?
Well, I would think, well, this is just pie in the sky, but I would think the responsibilities would have to be assumed or taken over by some other agency. But that's very speculative, what that question is, that PG&E was failed to exist. I don't know what would happen to that program.
I'll just add, I think the Rule 20A program is a CPUC-required program. So if any, if it was PG&E or whatever successor entity, if it's CPUC-regulated, I would assume that the program would continue. If it's some non-regulated, non-CPUC-regulated entity, then maybe it would just go away. But it's, like Craig said, it's hard to speculate at this point.
Thank you. That was it.
Okay. Any questions on this side of the dice? Okay. All right, so with that, I'll open up to public comment. Does anybody wish to comment on the Underground story? Okay, very good. Well, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council.
Well, if there's no further discussion, and it doesn't look like there is, I move to adopt a resolution establishing Underground Utility District number 2020-01.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody nay, abstention? All right, we'll show that's a 5-0 vote for the motion. Thank you very much for your time tonight. Now I'll move to regular agenda, item 12B, Midyear Budget Review and Adjustment Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Hello, Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm proud to present our mid-year budget and actual review. So I want to emphasize, this is a review. It's a part of our budget process that we go through before we go into strategic planning to really analyze where we started, how far we've come, and what we're looking for in the future. When it's an opportunity to reflect, as well as look forward. So with that, we're going to go over the budget process overview, some citywide overview of our financials, our budget to actual, the general fund specifics for revenues and expenditures, the enterprise funds, and then in addition this year is our cash and investment portfolio. So the fiscal year highlights for fiscal year 1920, we're really a five-pronged approach. We have a strategic focus on economic development to ensure the long-term vitality of the city. We also wanted to focus on maintenance of core services while continuing to aggressively pursue the opportunities to increase efficiencies and services, and service improvements. We wanted to continue in meeting and exceeding our general fund reserve policy, which is at a target of 25%. That's a minimum target. Meeting or exceeding the enterprise fund reserve policy at 33% and having a strategic funding for our significant capital improvements that are going on throughout the city. So a brief summary of all of the capital projects that we have going on. There's approximately $2.7 million of streets improvements, $600,000 in parks improvements, $430,000 of building and utility, building improvements, utility infrastructure of $425,000. And then streets and parks improvements is going to allow us to leverage approximately $1.5 million in grants opportunities. So big strategic focus on what we had for this fiscal year. Proud of that budget. We did win our third consecutive budget award from both the GFOA and CSMFO. These are a great light on the detail, lots of detail, in our budget, but also its usability. It's overseen GFOA and CSMFO, our professionals who produce these budgets, who review CAFERS and understand the financial impacts of the budgets and what goes into them. And so it is a great, leads to having a great policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and that communication device to our public and the users of it. And from this, we actually also created our Budget in Brief, which then translates this giant budget book that is a good communication device to the public in a summary form that's easily summarized in an elevator speech. So it was a good tool for that as well. So like I said, this really starts off our next budget cycle. It's a review of where we were, where we are, what we're doing right now, and I look forward to what's coming. So right now, we're in February, doing our mid-year financial performance review. We're going to step right into March with strategic planning for the next year, which also is an evaluation of how far, what's left in this year to wrap up and what we're going to get to, you know, to add on to it next year. And then, so our tentative schedule for those budget workshops, I want to just kind of put a light out there for that, is coming up quickly. So March 26 is our first kind of strategic planning session. These are all kind of tentative right now. April 21 is the general fund, and May 5 for our enterprise fund. So as soon as we're done with mid-year, we're not done. We just keep going on to the next best thing. So into the actual numbers, some of us like numbers. So citywide, this is really a big picture where we're looking citywide. So we have total revenues for the year of approximately $10 million for our actuals, citywide. And then as far as expenses, it's just over at $10.5 million. And this is in line with our expectations based on the timing of the receipts and the timing of our expenditures. If we go to the next slide, I'll kind of give you a brief synopsis of those ones that you'll see. So the general funds, the difference is primarily due to the timing of the receipts and specifically for the sales tax. We'll go into that a little bit more in depth in a few more slides. The special revenues, the difference is due to the timing from our gas taxes, our Prop 172, and our CDBG grants. So we've, we're working on those grants, and so it's a timing of receipts for those grants that aren't right where we had them programmed. But again, those are just a timing issue, and they're going to even out. We see them coming in through the end of the year. The debt service, this is also an anomaly because we pay the principal portion of our bonds at the very beginning of the year. And so that's also where we get the assessment income for those bond payments. And so those, again, they mesh where the revenues, it's a time lag. So we're going to see them then again. So down below, you'll see overall the expenses are at 42.2% of budget, where our revenues are at the 47.5% of budget. So we really are overall in line with where we expected to be, even given these timing of receipts. Now we're going to do a deep dive into our major funds, which is our general fund. Overall, again, I'm just going to keep saying this, revenues are right in line, with the exception of the sales tax, which is not a matter of it not being aligned, but a matter of timing. And our expenditures, again, were below that 50% expectation of where we would be with expenditures. That is again due to contract services timings, timings of different projects that are happening and where they're fitting into our year. There again, another graph, lots more numbers showing those percentages at the 42.3% of budget with the revenues. And I did want to make sure I broke out the transfers in because I don't want to manipulate those numbers for anything. So you'll see those transfers in are primarily due to, I'll get into, I guess, the next slide. So it's just really showing overall revenues, transfers in, expenditures, transfers out, transfers out are primarily for our capital projects. So that's due to the timing of our capital projects and when the fundings go out for them. So our general fund revenues. So here's all of our general fund revenues by grouping of type. So even though we list property taxes in the very top, it's our secondary revenue source compared to our sales tax. Then we also have then contributing from other taxes, permits, rents, other agencies, community development charges, and other departmental charges. We have investment earnings, which are doing fairly well, as well as contributions, which again are also doing really well compared to last. So I wanted to provide just a quick picture. We do a lot of pie charts. And I thought this one was really kind of interesting where it shows our whole revenue streams. This is what we received in actuals, but more in a box chart. So you can see how they all kind of fit together. Over half of our revenues are really from sales tax. So that is a big chunk of where we are and what's important. And it's kind of good to know that half of that is pretty much Measure G. So it's about equal from what we get from Bradley Burn and Measure G. And then the rest of our revenue streams. So the categories on the bottom right-hand corner, you can't even see them. So $20,000 are both from community development and public works charges. Again, that's due to development fees and project fees. And so that's based on timing of those. So sometimes those do make a big chunk of money coming in to supplant the additional services and costs that they do for all their hard work. But it's just the timing of those projects. And then the $16,000, which is still, you know, small in the corner, but it is $2,000 more than we were last year. So we are doing a lot of getting out there and getting contributions and stuff to go towards special events and special projects. The transfers are all derived from the Public Safety Special Revenue Fund, which receives special revenues primarily from the PSAF Prop 172 and the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Account, which is SLISA. And these are transferred in directly to support the frontline law enforcement services. So those transfers in from revenues are from the special revenue sources. And so again, those are a little bit less because they're derived based on those special revenues, which have timing differences from where we are. Here's a different perspective on the sales tax. So even though a big chunk of our revenues derive from sales tax, our sales tax rate is 9.25% here in Cattati, and 6% automatically goes to the state. So of that penny, we get 1% for Bradley Burn, it's 1% for Measure G, 6% goes to the state, and 1.25% goes to other counties, special, whatever. So it is really, for every penny paying sales tax, little tiny slivers come to us, but that really is what helps us continue to run the city. And I also wanted to provide just a quick snapshot of what industries are providing these sales tax to the city, kind of a new perspective on what we have. And you'll see that most of it is at 29%, coming from building and construction. Davey and I, we both kind of analyze sales tax on a quarterly basis. We have a sitting meeting where we go through different sales tax and where it's coming from, and what industries are going, what's coming, and kind of taking a strategic look at it. So we understand this because it is such a vital asset to our city. And so this is a part of what we also look at, is seeing where it's coming from. And so understanding that is a big piece of our review as well. So where are we at with sales tax? So sales tax is 48.2% year-to-date of the general fund revenues. We have receipts monthly from the state, but we do have a two-month lag. So we've received, as of December for the mid-year report, we had received four months for this calendar year. So when you adjust for it, we're actually above where we would be budgeted. So that's why we're proposing an adjustment to bring us more in line with where we really should be for our revenues. So even though it's highly, it's somewhat unusual to increase our revenues, we want to make sure we're still planning for it appropriately and not having this additional revenue source come in at the very end where we're trying to strategically, you know, try and find out where we are at year-end for next year. We want to have that adjustment expected and then understand when it comes in, and if it comes in even higher, be in a better place there. So we still are keeping it conservative while making sure we're accounting for it properly. So that's a different thing this year, that we are proposing some mid-year adjustments. And I know there's notes in here. So prior year, 1819, you can see that it was a little bit higher than it is this year. And that's because we're in that third year of the state having their new system. So in 1718, they were missing a bunch of payments. And so they pushed out a bunch of extra payments to us in 1819 to make up for it. And so we have extra revenues in 1819, which now we're back to a normal sales tax revenue. So property taxes. So property taxes year-to-date are 29.2% of the general fund revenues. These receipts are twice a year, so they're right at what we expected for the budget, which is at 57% of the budget. We do get some true-ups, but we were excited about this being more in line with where we are and not proposing any adjustment for that revenue source. General fund expenditure. General fund expenditures. So general fund expenditures exceeded the previous year by approximately 18%, or 663,000. Most of this increases due to the volume of transfers out of funding for major streets improvement projects, which you can see around the city, including those that are getting significant grant matching requirements, which are met by Measure G, which is primarily East Cotati Avenue Streets Improvement Project. Spending in all the remaining general fund departments is really consistent with the prior year, with changes due to adjustments in staffing and classifications of contract services, which, and so classification of contract services, as well as the increased insurance cost. During the mid-year evaluation process, we did however identify, so again, this is a review process, so we go through and we try and understand what's going on, where everything's moving. We did identify that we had missed the overtime cost component when we were building out the budget. And so we have a large Excel spreadsheet, as well as now we have another system that we're utilizing to estimate and build out templates for projections for salaries and bands and all the costing that go into it. And so that is something where maybe sure is not going to ever happen again, but it is something that we identified this time as something that was just, we had all the other costs within the budget was in there, and, but this one was overlooked, so we did not have the budget numbers in there for the overtime. It's typically not a problem for any other departments because we try, we have enough budget or time off or other things that help mesh for the overtime, because it's not significant. But due to the PSPS and other unplanned situations which cause more overtime, we are going to propose a budget adjustment for mid-year of $162,000 in additional appropriations for this year in order to meet that overtime expectation. So by department, through the first six months as compared to budget, general fund expenditures are tracking as expected at 44% of budget. A slightly lower rate of spending is primarily due to the additional transfers out to be performed in the last two quarters. So we're still expecting, we're going to do a lot more street stuff, we're going to do some more design and more transfer out that are required for meeting those contracts in the next two quarters. So our enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater, or sewer. There's a lot of information here, but really it just comes down to, everything's in line with our expectations. There was nothing super surprising. Revenues are greater than budget, but we're finding that it's really a combination of extra usage, so it's going to go out in expenses once we get the bills. So there's a time lag in the bill. So we're going to, so there's extra usage as well as the uptick and the change in the slight changes in rates. And so additionally, the water and wastewater funds also received an additional $187,000 and $664,000 in connection fees that were related to the development project at Mel So those were also a significant increase in the revenue sources for both water and wastewater. Overall, enterprise funds and revenues and expenses as compared to budget are on target. Over during the mid-year, it was identified that a transfer of $1 million from the sewer operations to the sewer capital in order to meet their contribution for the P1 pipeline was not completed prior to the year-end. And so the budget, there's no budget mechanism for transfer rollover. There's a mechanism for rollover of capital projects that lap over multiple years, but not a funding stream rollover for funding capital projects over multiple years. So since that wasn't completed before year-end, we wanted to ask for that appropriation so we can properly transfer the funding from the operations fund to the capital fund for the sewers. For financial parting purposes, all the sewer is rolled up together, all the water's rolled up together, so there's no differential there. But when we get down to rate study details and stuff, some of those things do matter. And so we want to make sure that we're showing it in the best light possible, and we're making sure we're taking due diligence with their fund balances and where the funding should have been spent. Overall, for fiscal year 1920, most expenses are in line with the budget with the one significant decrease in the capital outlay expenses for wastewater due to the significant expenditures last year for P1 pipeline. And last but not least, we wanted to really shine a light on our cash investments and give you a snapshot of where our cash investments portfolio was as of December 31st. And it really is also investment in our local businesses, our heritage, our infrastructure, and our use, because those are also our investments for the city. So summary of our cash investments. So our cash investments had an excess of $16 million as of December 31st, continues today. All of our investments are in line with our city adopted investment policy. We do consider this well within our needs for the next six months. And just to explain, the city does utilize a pooled cash investments process where it's not a single fund has this bank account, and this fund has this bank account, and none the two shall mix. We have a pooled fund so that we can group the funds together in order to make better investments and strategically use them where they're needed, but they also have the access to them as needed to pay the expenditures for the funds. So here's really a graphic on what the investments portfolio is by our investment. So we have a total amount in late of approximately 12 million. We have amount in skip of around half a million, RBC about one, and then we do hold some amounts in operating cash. So that's the total of the 16.3 by our portfolio. So that's where it's all sitting in the different investments. But then because we do have a pooled cash, we also like to see it as of what fund is holding these cash, which one is having the excess fund balance, where is it all sitting? So you can see that we have a significant portion of the cash investments for our general fund operations. So it is solvent, it is meeting its operation needs, as well as the water and wastewater continue to have a significant balance in order to meet the needs of those funds. So in conclusion, the first two quarters really are tracking with budget. We are really in line with our review process and our detailed evaluation of our budget to actuals. And we want to make sure that, you know, like, these are actuals so that we can continue going forward, we're not having to wait for adjustments or two months down the road and doing a report to you in March for December. So we want to get more actuals and get these in front of you more often. We are requesting those budget adjustments due to the increase in sales tax that we're expecting of about $117,000, the increased expenditures for overtime of $162,000, and then as well as that $1 million transfer between the wastewater operations and the wastewater capital. C staff is going to continue to update you on any forecasting changes as they come up or as we see necessary. And we are fully committed to exercising prudence and integrity with all of these reports and providing this transparent accountability for all of our uses of the city funds. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions for staff at this point? No? Right thorough, detailed reports?
No, no questions. I do want to say thank you, though. The reports over the last few years have gotten clearer as far as, you know, not just the transparency part, but I mean, just to be able to see, okay, and see where these things are moving in different funds that we have. And it's, you know, it's not a simple task, obviously, to juggle all of this, so, and congrats, of course, on the Third Street Award, too. So that's, that's important because that's an independent group that looks at all the cities of different sizes. So you guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
And Councilman Burridge.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Damian because one of the questions that I asked was about the $160,000 in overtime. Since the majority of that was caused by the PSPS, that's not something that we could have planned for. And I did ask, you know, had we put in a claim for that, because apparently most agencies are putting in for that because it's above and beyond what we had to do. So not like we'll ever see anything, but thank you for that response that, least that we could and least that we did, so. And thank you for the report. I like all the details.
All right, if I can comment, we did put in a request for reimbursement, not only for the expenditures that were incurred, but also for loss of revenue source. So we did make sure that we put in for both of those what we get.
Likely nothing, but at least we could and we did.
I'm hoping for a thank you note for this, at least.
Maybe they'll send you flowers.
Maybe.
Okay, any questions or comments from the side? Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment. Would anybody like to comment on the mid-year budget review? Yes, Mr. Burridge.
Every time we get a new financial director, seems like the reports are clearer than the director before. It said, the report says the revenues and expenses are on target. City Hall here, the city hall building here is, has been in dire need of earthquake retrofit for over 20 years. Never in the report. It's shameful. And if there's ever a moderate earthquake in this building and this building comes down on our heads, it would be very interesting justice. Our poor staff in these buildings have to work in this building every day while this situation exists. It's shameful. There's no mention in the report tonight about unfunded, the city's unfunded liabilities, which are predicted and estimated to be in the millions. Even back when Jeff Fox was mayor, he expressed serious concern on his leaving the city on this issue. There's no code enforcement in this town, basically. No weed abatement or weed enforcement in this town. That's bad old news. There's a shortage of police protection in this town. Patrols here in town are pathetic. Maybe we should get an award for that. There's no funding source for the fake farm across the street. There's no city park on the west side of town that people have been complaining about for decades. Our dog park here in town is a disgrace. There's no money for any weed abatement. There's no money for any of the $71 million left estimated for the downtown specific plan, but thanks to President Obama, we got 1.1 million. In 10 years, we got 1.1 million towards a $73 million downtown specific plan. Very good. Very nice. There's no money for emergency preparedness in this town. There's no money for any services for the homeless. No money for our seniors. But there's more money leaving Cotati every day. Shopping out of town, online sales. And you guys want to give yourself a pat on the back.
All right, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the mid-year budget review and adjustment? Yes, Ms. Alderman.
This is more of a question. There was a $1 million transfer, and it looked like it came from one fund balance. There was a difference between, was it like an accounting error and got into one account and then the other? That's basically my, I didn't really understand where the one, it's the water fund, the water capital, but there was, it seemed like there wasn't a straight line of how it came to be transferred.
Anyway. Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, now we'll close public comments and bring it back to council and staff. Any further comments?
Could we get staff to answer?
Sure.
Clarify it again.
The million dollar transfer. So this was a transfer with the P1 pipeline. There's a portion of the pipeline that serves existing customers, and there's another portion that serves new customers potentially. And so this, what the funding part of it is, is that the operations account for the sewer fund needed to contribute $1 million towards the P1 pipeline. So it's a transfer from the operations account to the capital account.
Because we always fund our capital projects out of capital fund accounts, not from operating funds.
All capital projects are funded through capital, are expended through capital funds.
And I will also add, too, that the transfer was all part of the approved funding package. It previously had been approved by council. It just, the funding itself wasn't executed before the end of the fiscal year. It just got missed. So it's really just coming back and saying, we know we talked to you all about this before, and you proved it before, and it's all history at this point, but we just need to move it like we said we would a year ago. That's just what we're doing now.
Okay. Any further questions? Then I'll be looking for a motion for the second half.
I would be happy to move a resolution approving a mid-year adjustment for the fiscal year 2019-20 budget.
Second? If we have a motion in a second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, please show us a five-o vote. And we'll move on to item 12C, Discussion of State and Regional Initiatives to Improve Power Delivery.
May I, Madam Mayor, it's four minutes to 10. Do you want to?
Oh, yes. So we have one, two, a few more items on the, two more items on the regular agenda, and then we have the remainder of the reporting out. So I would ask for a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock.
So moved? Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have four ayes and one nay. Okay. Sure, I guess it's not, okay. It's not, yeah.
I said this was 497 pages, and you all know I have disabilities, the spinal cord is a thing, and I'm going to have to leave at 10, which happens every, it wasn't unanimous tonight, but you usually do unanimously go past 10. You don't have any respect for people like me that have disabilities and cannot go more than three hours.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Yes, Mr. Burridge.
Yeah, I have to agree with Lori Alderman. I'm working for a living. Three hours tonight is plenty. Trying to get through that report today was enough. I would ask the city council if they would please reschedule and adjourn this meeting to next Tuesday night, pick up where you've left off tonight, and conduct these meetings reasonably in a reasonable amount of time. You're wearing out staff, you're wearing out the public on these long meetings, and I think it would be very easy to just adjourn and pick up the meeting again next Tuesday night and finish up where you left off tonight.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So anybody else on public comment? Yes.
Yes, good evening, council. I'd appreciate it if you'd continue. I've actually been, I guess, two hours here waiting for the next item on the agenda. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, with no other public comment, I'll close public comments and bring it back to council. And this is one of the benefits of having it being videotaped and broadcast so that people can catch up later on. And also, I would like to comment that two out of the five of us also work full-time.
And I would also like to comment, Madam Mayor, that the public may not know of any disabilities that the current council may have. So for all they know, we could all have disabilities.
Okay, with that, we will move on to item 12C, Pushing Through. And with that, I believe I'm turning to City Manager.
Yes, all right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So a quick walk down memory lane, in 2010, there was a gas explosion in San Bruno, which I think everybody knows about. It leveled the city neighborhood and caused a lot of, besides the obvious property damage and injuries and fatalities, it also caused a lot of claims and liability for PG&E. And then that was sort of the first, I think, the first time that the public had visibly seen the consequences of what has now turned out to be a lack of infrastructure maintenance on PG&E's part. In 2017, up here in Sonoma County, the Tubbs Fire, as you know, swept through a lot of the county and destroyed a lot of Lark Field as well as the Coffee Park area of Santa Rosa. And then, that fire was followed the next year by the Camp Fire, which completely destroyed the town of Paradise. And then, last year, we had the Kincaid Fire in Sonoma County, which fortunately didn't destroy any urban areas, but caused a lot of damage in the unincorporated areas. And each of these events has been attributed to sparking and arcing from PG&E facilities, which again was attributed to poor maintenance practices in the past. So, facing all of these claims and liability from, from this series of catastrophic events, PG&E filed for court protection from its creditors under Chapter 11 bankruptcy, Chapter 11 bankruptcy filing. This is the, this is the second time in the last 20 years that PG&E has filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy. The previous time was in the early 2000s. This was during the brownouts days and they had mis-purchased power and they were expecting more hydropower basically from the Northwest, which didn't come to pass because of drought conditions. And then, I think there was companies like Enron that were more than happy to sell them power at very high prices. So, that, that unexpected emergency power purchasing that occurred that year forced PG&E into Chapter 11 bankruptcy as well. So, but in this case, we're talking about the bankruptcy being caused by the liability that was caused in these recent events. So, following the bankruptcy proceedings, the, and, and as was demonstrated during the PSPS and some of how they've been operating lately, there was a lot of concern that grew around the state, but also in the state legislature about, you know, as PG&E was trying to put proposals forth in bankruptcy protection court, or in court for bankruptcy process, there was a lot of concern developing about PG&E prioritizing stakeholder interests, particularly the rate, the bond, bondholders, the investors, as well as the investors in PG&E getting higher priority than maybe the other stakeholders such as the customers. And, and sort of in parallel with all this, the state passed a law, AB 1054 in 2019, which created this wildlife, or wildfire fund, which was intended to be sort of a safety net for catastrophic wildfire claims for companies like PG&E. And the governor had put a condition on PG&E accessing that fund, which was that they had to exit bankruptcy proceedings by June 30th of this year, 2020, in a form acceptable essentially to the governor. And that process is still going on. So, like I mentioned earlier, there was a lot of concern among all the different stakeholders. Some of those included cities, of course. And a prominent one is, a prominent voice in this discussion is Mayor Sam Liccardo. He's the mayor of San Jose. And he put together a, sort of a principles document that looked at customer ownership, basically a co-op ownership of the PG&E utility, which is a common model throughout the country. We just aren't familiar with it here in California because our utilities here in California are investor-owned utilities, which are referred to as IOUs. Yeah, they IOU a lot of money after these wildfire claims. And so, also, just as a side note, in October of last year, the mayor of San Francisco, Mayor Breed, put together a proposal to buy PG&E's local power lines within the city limits of San Francisco for $2.5 billion, but PG&E rebuffed this offer. So, this has been a common theme that PG&E is trying to protect their IOU structure and trying to navigate bankruptcy court. And the two, the two offers right now, or the two different plans that are in there is one that's been, that one sort of exiting bankruptcy plan was put forward by the, by all the investors in PG&E, which obviously would favor investors in, you know, trying to keep the haircut to a minimum that they have to take as it exits bankruptcy. The other is PG&E's, which is also not that acceptable to, especially the governor and customers. And the concern is the, the sort of the trend in the long-term history of not prioritizing customer interests, customer safety primarily, and in turn, or instead prioritizing sort of the short-term investor-type interests, such as stock price and then the people that have issued loans to PG&E for various things. And then, so finally, in just, in February, actually this month, Senator Weiner introduced SB 917, which would create yet a third option. So, we have the IOU model, which is the current model of PG&E. Mayor Sam Liccardo put together sort of a principles structure for a customer-owned, sort of co-op future for PG&E. And then, Weiner introduced the third option, which is a public ownership option. And so, just to run through those, the investor-owned utility, if PG&E emerges from bankruptcy in this model, it would continue as an investor-owned utility. So, that means it's privately held, it's regulated by the CPUC and has a monopoly over Northern California and continuing to, and has a continuing need to be a publicly traded company to produce dividends for investors. So, PG&E is a privately-held company, but unlike most private companies, you know, normally the theory is right with private companies that they have competition in the marketplace, so therefore they find the most efficient way to do things. It's a little different in this case because even though PG&E is privately-owned, they also have a monopoly on their service territory. So, they have no competition. Publicly-owned utility, this is the sort of Weiner model, the SB 917. And under this model, PG&E, or at least under Weiner's bill, PG&E would be transformed into a publicly-owned utility. And interestingly enough, it doesn't name PG&E in that bill, but it, but there's a trigger in the bill that basically says if, if you all are convicted of felonies, right, which PG&E has felony convictions, they would be, they would fall into this public ownership arena as a possibility. And the Weiner bill envisions the new public entity being called the Northern California Energy Utility Services. It's a district-based governance board, so each, so PG&E's service territory would broken up into districts. They would be elected and appoint, you know, they'd be elected and sit on the PG&E, or the, this new entity's board, governance board, similar to municipal electric utility. So, some, like in Sonoma County, for example, we have Healdsburg, which is a publicly-owned electric utility. So, just like that model, it would, it would be, so like, just like Healdsburg owns all their distribution lines within the city of Healdsburg, they basically just buy power that gets transmitted to them through transmission lines to their city limits and then they distribute it within their city. Same idea here, right? It would be basically that model of public utility and PG&E employees would basically become, I guess, they'd largely be transitioned into this new utility. And the PG&E's assets under this model would be acquired through eminent domain. And the, one of the clauses in there is that other entities, I guess other cities if they wanted to, so think San Francisco or whoever, wanted to get involved in this could participate in this eminent domain action and acquire utilities for their service territories. So, I'm talking distribution utilities within their territories. Other models in the, in the city, other prominent public models in the state of California, I'm sorry, are, I had mentioned Healdsburg because they're in our county, but big, big models within the state of California are the city of Sacramento and the city of Los Angeles. They've been publicly-owned utilities for a long time. And then finally, customer-owned utilities, this is the Mayor Liccardo proposal, which is similar, like I mentioned, to other co-ops that are common in other parts of the country, just not really known to us here in California. And in a, in a customer-owned utility, so part of, even though that would be a private entity, the way that at least Liccardo's principles have been laid out is it would be structured like, essentially like, it would operate like a public utility. So, they would subject themselves, as I understand it voluntarily, to things like Public Records Requests Act law, Brown Act meeting laws, to ensure it addresses one of the, one of the biggest complaints about PG&E, one of the biggest complaints about the way PG&E operates in terms of administrative operations is that they're, because they're a private entity, they don't have to disclose a lot of the stuff, so there's a lot of things that are not released publicly. So, that's part of the Liccardo proposal. And then, one last thing before I get into some pros and cons of these different things, these different structures, is that in the governor's budget summary, I put a quote in there just from the budget summary document, and it basically just reiterates what I think I mentioned earlier, is that if the governor's not satisfied with how PG&E tries to emerge from bankruptcy, he could trigger kind of the, you know, the restructuring option, which is potentially a public option or, or maybe a customer-owned utility option, like the Liccardo option, if legislation is introduced to allow that model to exist. So, just some pros and cons, I'll just touch on some high points and then I'll turn it all over, over back to you, is, so the investor-owned utility, which is the current model of PG&E, it is a private ownership model, but PG&E has a monopoly within its service territory, so it has no competition, as we all know. In this model, investor ownership creates a need to produce financial benefit for shareholders who typically demand, typically demand short-term quarterly returns. And this, and why this is relevant here is that it creates an inherent tension between the long-term infrastructure safety needs from a public policy perspective that has been, has been loudly conveyed since these fires versus the short-term dividend demands of investors. And the investor-owned utility model, there's a lot of, or there's some uncertainties around the rate-setting process and cost recovery through the current CPUC process, which if you take at face value, some of the things that are presented in the Liccardo proposal that limits, there, limits the pools of money that PG&E can access for borrowing. So, the private markets apparently don't like that model as much, so they don't have access to capital at the lowest rates because there's rate uncertainty every time they go before the CPUC for a rate, a rate change. And, and then, of course, there's always just the profit motive of investor-owned utilities, so you have to pay dividends to investors and so forth. So, that creates another sort of cost burden in that model that needs to be satisfied. And in a public-owned utility, it, so this, this model has been used in Sonoma County, in Healdsburg, it's also used in Sacramento and Los Angeles, to my knowledge. All of those models have operated successfully. I don't think there's any issues with them that I'm aware of. It would allow local utilities to participate in the formation and purchase of assets from PG&E under the Weiner bill to create new municipal or regional utilities. If the local utilities were to purchase PG&E assets, it's assumed, is my assumption, that they would run these areas with the regional utility filling in for the rest of the former PG&E service territory. So, basically, if people decide to step up and buy parts of PG&E system, then they can, and then they would be the operator kind of like Healdsburg is of that area. For the areas that aren't purchased, then this sort of default Northern California entity would operate those areas. And then, the potential risk of public ownership, of course, is that these new public entities would be assuming the risk of whatever liabilities is conveyed to them through, through what happens with PG&E's dissolution. So, the biggest, the biggest issues are, there's about a $25 billion liability number sitting there from the fires, right? And then, another roughly equal $25 billion, roughly, it's like $28 billion, I think, in infrastructure upgrades. So, this is like neglected infrastructure cost. Over the next four years, they estimate, to bring the infrastructure, just to deal with the next four years of infrastructure upgrades, it'd be about another $25, $28 billion. So, you're looking at a total sort of out-the-gate debt burden potentially of $50 billion. And I will say, regardless of which model you choose, you're dealing with potentially that kind of debt burden. So, one of the most, you're not going to, you're not going to get rid of the deferred infrastructure issue. That's going to, that's going to come with any model you choose. There's going to be $25 billion sitting there waiting for, waiting for attention. The issue that may change, the thing that may change with these different ownership models is this other $25 billion sitting over here, which is, you know, liabilities caused by the fire, things, you know, debt they owe to bondholders and so forth. Depending on how this, how PG&E comes out of bankruptcy court, some of that could go away potentially, or some of it could come fully forward into the next entity. So, anyway, getting back to the public ownership model, depending on what pieces of that debt come forward, that's going to be potential liabilities that that new owner would have to deal with, in whole, if it's one entity, or in part, if it's broken up. And just another potential downside, this is just highlighted in the Mayor Liccardo proposal, is that public acquisitions of private assets through eminent domain, it may result in litigation and could be a long process and that could add additional cost potentially in that structure. So, finally, the so-called Liccardo option, this is the only option that doesn't either have a bill that would carry it at the moment, or a, or a actual fully-formed proposal in bankruptcy court. So, right now, it exists as a, as a vetted, kind of a vetted list of principles that could turn into a proposal, depending on how things progress over the next couple of months until June, when the bankruptcy process is supposed to be complete. So, the primary benefit here is again, so this would still, this would keep PG&E as a private model, right? So, it wouldn't become a public entity. But the difference with a customer-owned utility is you're not, you're not paying for, you're not paying dividends to shareholders, right? You're basically, you're, you answer to your customers, which is essentially anyone that has a utility count is a customer. It's a co-op model, is what they call it. Like I said, it's common in other parts of the country. And it's thought that this model would have access to less expensive capital, so something to think about, whether you're restructuring sort of the liabilities that you're coming to the party with, or you're going out to get capital to deal with the deficient infrastructure that exists today. The thought is, is that because this type of model, they're not going to the CPUC, they're setting their rates and implementing them. There's less uncertainty, so in the capital markets, the thinking goes that you'd have access to less expensive capital, so capital with lower interest rates. So, therefore, you would save all the customers more money at the end of the day because you're not having to carry a higher debt load because of the interest costs. And that, you know, and that may also be true with a public model too. I don't know. That hasn't been fully vetted, at least in my mind. But it doesn't seem to be true in the IOU model, which is the current model for PG&E. From a, from a governance perspective, like I mentioned earlier, under the Liccardo model, they have offered to make this fully operate like a public utility. So, it would have Brown Act requirements just voluntarily imposed on it, as well as public records request laws. And again, the PG&E staff would be, would be hired into this model. Apparently, under this type of structure, they wouldn't be subject to federal taxation. And the same would be true for state taxation, but they've proposed in their principles that they would voluntarily submit to state and local taxation. But they would save money, save money apparently on federal taxation. In terms of the election of the governance board, it wouldn't be, it's not clear to me exactly how the governance board would be elected, although what I know so far based on the proposals is that there would be candidates that would be vetted through the Cal ISO process, independent system operator, right? So, Cal ISO would vet the candidates and then they would go to some sort of election process. The only thing that the Liccardo proposal talks about is that the rate pairs would have a role in that. So, maybe it's like your, you know, triple A, you know, board member kind of elections where you get something in the mail and you can vote, but mostly, you know, I don't know how it would go, but that's just how I envisioned it when I read it. And lastly, this And lastly, this model would have to be created through this Act of State Legislature, currently no proposal exists, at least not one that's been introduced. And it's unknown if this model anticipates smaller regional or municipal entities being involved in whatever this new entity is, this new co-op. The only thing the Liccardo proposal does say is that if there's CCAs, like Sonoma Clean Power, or any sort of, there's several, there's quite a few of them, actually, in PG&E service territory, they would still be the leads in procuring power, but it sounds like the new co-op entity would still be owning the actual distribution and transmission within the service territory, at least as I understand the proposal. So I'll just wrap this up by saying that regardless of which proposal ultimately moves forward at the state level, a key aspect, in my mind, is really how PG&E's liabilities get resolved, or, you know, because if they're not, if the liabilities fully carry forward, then whoever takes this over, whether it's PG&E or some other entity, they're going to be fully saddled with that. And we all know that, again, no matter who takes this entity forward, they already are looking at at least a $25 billion price tag over the next four years, just to deal with the deficient infrastructure that exists today. So that is it in a nutshell, not so much of a nutshell, not a big nutshell. But I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and really, the action, or the recommendation here is that if there's, just to provide direction, if you have any, at this point, but this largely exists at the state level right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to counsel for any questions at this point. Let me think, from this end, yes, Councilwoman Harvey.
So Damian, you may or may not know this, but how did Healdsburg get to be their own utility? And when did that happen? I know it exists, but I don't know the backstory there.
So my understanding is all, the three utilities that I mentioned, so Sacramento, LA, and Healdsburg, they formed a long, long time ago. I mean, I would hazard to say probably close to 100 years ago.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I might be overstating some, in some cases, yeah, for Healdsburg, but 60 years in.
The firm at one time represented the city of Santa Clara, and its utility dated back to the beginnings of municipal, or just electric utilities at all, so when PG&E was formed in, I don't know, that would have been 1890s. I think that's when Santa Clara's system started. I don't know the history of Healdsburg, but it goes back a long time.
Long, okay.
It was probably before, I think a lot of them formed in the 30s, when there was an opportunity to, the federal legislation changed, and there was an opportunity to condemn out existing electric utilities, but I think Healdsburg goes back even further.
Okay. And do we know, given those few that already are public power utilities, how their infrastructure stacks up? Do we have any insight into that?
I don't have any insight, only that there's been no catastrophic failures that I'm aware of in any of those utilities, but aside from that, I have no direct knowledge.
Those are just my questions right now. Okay. Anything from the Councilwoman Dossel?
Yeah, no real questions. I know I did sit in last year on a couple of Mayor Liccardo's conference calls. There was one of those conference calls, there was probably 60 people on it, and everybody was on mute, so it wasn't super productive from my end. But it was still, and this is going back even before his February email that's in our packet, it was still just this work in progress, but I think, more than anything, it's kind of like, let's lay the groundwork, let's put out these principles, get some feedback, and see what happens with the whole litigation process. And I'm assuming that's kind of, because now I've backed off, I'm not mayor, I don't know if that's kind of where we are with his process, anyway. And I think any of these, like Damian said, they're going to be riddled with this huge monetary deficiency. Not to mention, that's not, you know, $25 billion is probably not going to fix everything that PG&E has that's an issue, that's just something in the next four years, and it's a huge risk and liability. But, you know, the processes it was proposed to me way back in November, I think it was, or October, was, let's have a conversation, let's make this, you know, kind of a statewide conversation, because what we have right now really doesn't appear to be working well. And I think a lot of people can agree with that, and so that's kind of where it's been progressing from. So, I mean, I'm not sure that we really do need to take any action on this outside of, now we've, you know, been further educated on the matter, let's sit back and see what happens, and I think, I think most of it's being driven by the governor, anyway, right now.
I will just add on to that, that you're absolutely right, that Liccardo has taken the position of, we're just waiting to see how bankruptcy court sort of sorts itself out with his proposal in the wings, with his proposal in the wings. And the infrastructure issue, the $25 billion-ish in the next four years, is an unavoidable fact that anyone's going to face. The other $25 billion of liability, that's going to be an important consideration, kind of where that lands, for anyone that takes this forward. But thirdly, I will say that whatever entity moves forward, you want them to have access to the lowest-cost capital possible, because that's going to save cost, right, for this huge mountain of debt that you're going to have to deal with. And if you take Liccardo's principles at face value, PG&E is unable to, because of the rate-setting process, access the best-cost capital. But one of the other models presumably could. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay. Comments from the side of the dais?
Yeah, since we kind of wandered into comments here, thanks for a good, really good presentation, and this is obviously a pretty complex issue, and we boiled it down pretty well here. The real problem with either, you called this out perfectly in packet page 277, on publicly-owned utility, the real issue is the risk of assuming some are all of PG&E's liabilities, and those liabilities just aren't, just isn't what they might potentially have from legal adversity from their recent misadventures, but it's also the infrastructure. And typically, what we find when people defer maintenance on things, when we go in to start repairing, I'm seeing heads nod, because we've all been there, it's worse than you expect, there's a lot more. So there's the problem with either one of these models, you're going to face that challenge, is that those huge costs make it almost impossible to do anything. And yet, the problem is then going back to either the investor-supported, or the ratepayer, not ratepayer, but the shareholder support, the two potential outcomes of bankruptcy that are apparent at this point in time, have the same problem. The rate of return that's required for both of those is so high, that there just isn't enough capital to be raised to maintain and operate this infrastructure, and the problem not only stays the same, but probably continues to get worse. So really, probably the only path forward, and I'm sure the governor's wrestling with this, is somebody's on the hook for all the deferred maintenance from years, from decades, generations at PG&E. And that's obviously going to be all of us, the public, the state, as a whole, one way or the other. And would it probably make sense, the state's the only one that can wade in, and actually with enough capital, to level that playing field? Because if that playing field were leveled, if all those legal concerns were removed, if we weren't burdened with this incredible albatross of infrastructure problems, this is probably a much more manageable thing. I mean, certainly just in our region, I think what Sonoma Clean Power revenue should be without these burdens would be enough to allow us to take a look at making a long-term purchase of that infrastructure, if we went through, say, the Weiner process where there was that opportunity. So I guess the value of both of these really is, like you said, our outgoing mayor said, they both are remarkably similar in some ways, they carry some key benefits, they both really hit the benefit of PG&E you don't want to lose, is sharing those expensive costs throughout the state, so everybody can participate and make the most of it. Because if we go back to balkanization, it's going to be a lot of winners and a lot of losers, and we'll be back where we were 100 years ago. So that's probably really the direction it needs to happen, and hopefully, if we're able to get there, both the work that Liccardo and Weiner have done will be really helpful in laying out, okay, here's some principles, here's some concepts to get you there. I think the main problem right now with the Liccardo thing, at least, is that the principles are really solid, but there's no term sheet for bankruptcy court, and there's no bill. And we need to see those things, you kind of, before you endorse something, before you sign on the dotted line, you want to see the final language and make sure it's right, and that's the key thing. It's the type of thing, if somebody wanted to support Mayor Liccardo's effort, it has some really good advantages to it, it looks like, and I'd certainly be comfortable supporting it in concept. It's, I think I'd describe it as supporting its, I wrote it down here, endorsing their principles, because they match the principles the CCAs have put out, they match the principles everybody's been generating, San Francisco. And just be very clear, have the caveat that we support only if those principles are fully reflected in the final bill and term sheet. You know, I think that would be completely harmless to do, but at this point, there's not the detail we want to see, so who knows? Like we said earlier, who knows what's going to happen with PG&E? If they have another bad summer, the governor may well be sitting, taking a second look at both these plans and saying, okay, what do I want to pick out here? How does it work? We'll see.
All right. Ms. Mayor Moore, anything you had to question or comment?
No, I don't know that any advisement at this point would be any more helpful in the state, because we're waiting on the bankruptcy court. But if I was going to, I would probably lean toward the Liccardo.
In a nutshell.
Okay. Yeah, sure. And then I'll open it up to public comment, sure.
So, you know, I want to be really clear that we separate the PG&E employees from the management, because there's a lot of really hard workers out there that do a lot every day, day in and day out. You know, PG&E is a monopoly, it's stated in here clearly, it being a monopoly is a problem. You know, when you think about purchasing services, you know, I think about, you know, my cell phone, I have options. If I don't like the infrastructure, because I'm not getting calls, I have another option, and I can trade that. We just don't have that with PG&E. Your option is to, you know, go off the grid, you know, and that's about it. So I think that no matter what happens, as long as there's a monopoly, there's going to be a problem, because they will always be beholden to the top management, and their short-term look on their bonuses, and their investors. That's just, that is a reality. You know, you can't, you know, serve two masters, and the customers end up getting the brunt of that. The only way for there to be competition would be is if they broke it up and they created multiples of them, and then you had some choices there, but I don't see PG&E doing that either. I happen to have some experience with the co-op model. We happen to have that model at our property up in Idaho. We've had that property for some 25 years now, and that model has worked really very well, they're very responsive. We, in actuality, they live within their means, and there have been many occasions where we actually get a refund for the year. You usually have a contract, the contract is a set amount of money, you kind of use what you use, and then, at the end of the day, if there's, you know, money left over, then they, you know, actually refund that to you. So I know it can work. As it says in here somewhere, there's over 900 of them, serving over 40 million people in the United States, so it can work, and I have seen it work. So I think we just have to wait and see how this progresses, but I just, I don't see it staying the way it is. It just can't. We'll be paying, you know, probably quadruple what we're paying now, and there was just something on Nextdoor this week where people were complaining about, you know, their bills going from $60 to $400 and $500. No explanation, no nothing, people are saying, I didn't use anything different. And that's sort of, as I think Mark pointed out, that transparency there, you know, they do everything, you know, behind the curtain there, and you don't know how they're doing things, because they don't have to be transparent, because they're a private company. Anyways, just my two cents.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll open it up to public comment, and I know we had one, yes, so come on out, Ms. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, counsel. Well, as an electrical engineer, I've certainly been observing the systems, and observing the lines flapping and the high winds. I definitely agree with what Susan Harvey said about some of the systems, that from the technical point of view, the employees have to be put at the core of a healthy company, and that if, to some degree, the structures, perhaps on a CCA-type basis, where employee, where the way of having a quality, the quality of the infrastructure, or the quality of the equipment and the service model, it's really the service model, can have some competition, that the people within the different, maybe regional co-ops of some sort can be, go between companies, taking the ideas of what actually works between them. The way I understand investor-owned utilities, the IOUs, they're formed because they're a way of raising money to begin with, but, you know, I've been in some corporations where the whole discussion has been, hey, you get money on the stock market, you raise investor capital, but it's expensive to pay back. That's where we are right now, where we've had the payback, and what's more is, is that the CEOs that have been put in place in these companies, on the model of the stock market, have been prioritized to pay investors as much as possible, and it just doesn't work with this utility model, hasn't worked in the water areas, so it needs some sort of change with a focus on quality of the service that's there. One of the ideas that I had, and I mean, I guess there's backwards and forwards with all of this, is that if there is a power outage, a public service outage, that it should be explained afterwards. So on the first basis, is safety has to be top priority, safety of the network, people not getting killed from it, and also not causing fires. But if there is a need to turn off the network, then the local municipalities who are affected maybe have to come here, the technical people have to come forward and say, we shut your power off because of these conditions, and maybe it'll come to light that there's a short segment of line that public utility, rule number 20, has to be invoked, for some port part of the network to really make it reliable. Or it becomes apparent for that portion of the network that all of it is unreliable for some reason or the other. Rona Park, as the newer city, has gone underground. So older utilities tend to need more of an effort, need more money, and to be honest, we want that electricity to be there, and we can choose not to use much of it, I mean, to really reduce the power, which is what's been going on a lot of the time, but we need some voltage to be there. It's really beneficial to have some voltage, and people should be able to then decide not to use that much. So anyway, I appreciate the discussion here. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Anybody else, Mr. Barrich?
Well, let's think about these things for a second, too. How's, how have these things been working? Public education, public water delivery systems, public housing, public transportation, public television, public parks, public park closures and fees, public roads and public bridges, how's that been working for us? Public welfare programs, cost overruns, passed on to taxpayers.
This is going to tie into-
Higher public college tuitions.
Power delivery.
So the co-op model that you're talking about tonight means no incentives, no innovation, more shortages, more brownouts, higher energy costs for all, more civil servants, more doomed public pension systems, more bureaucratic complacency, more power and control of government, by government bureaucrats, and more unelected officials with no accountability, no recourse in a court of law against government, and government, more government immunity. in a court of law against government and government, more government immunity to look forward to. Government monopoly gives you no options either.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Actually, since I see no other public here, I will close public comments, assuming there's no further, and bring it back to council. So this is really just a provided direction. I think you may have adequate direction from all of us and more of a wait and see and see how things develop. And I mean, I'm curious to see how they're going to try to work in any kind of indemnity issues with the bankruptcy.
It'll be an interesting couple, next couple of months as they reach the end of June, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to item 12D, consideration for adoption of the city's five-year capital improvement program. What's that? Right. No. There's distraction. All right. Then we'll turn to Mr. Scott.
Mayor, members of the council. This item is consideration of a resolution adopting the city's five-year capital improvement program. And this CIP is a go-between between the ASTRA plans, which are far-reaching, they support the general, city's general plan, which envisions build-out of the city, and the city's annual budget. So you've got this like very distant look at the project picture, making sure our infrastructure is properly planned for and installed in this very near-term annual budget. So it fills this really big need of looking, pulling the most, highest priority projects out of those master plans and bringing them in to inform the budget. So the outline here, we've got the purpose of the CIP, general plan conformity, CIP constraints, selection of projects, project lists, and then a conclusion and recommendation. So just starting off here, the purpose of the CIP is to develop this in conjunction with the operating budget. So the project list is not done in a vacuum. We pull out the highest priority projects from the master plans and compare that to our revenue model. This projection of what we think revenues are going to be based on the best assumptions we have today and move forward from there. It's not something that commits certain dollars to certain projects. It's a planning tool. It really is. And it just gives us that little window into the future, just five years, which isn't that far, to help keep us sort of in step so when the budget and better prepared for when the annual budget comes along. Gives a little window into the future. So it pulls from the master plans plus, you know, in the course of doing business, things break or start straining or whatever. And so there's maintenance projects that come about outside of these master planning efforts, just in running our utilities and our buildings and everything else. Okay. So one of the required steps is to find conformity with the city's general plan. And so we took, staff brought this before the planning commission back in January, almost a month ago, just over a month ago now, was presented to them and looked in terms of how these projects meet the objectives and goals that are presented in the general plan. Okay? So the commission approved the CIP and recommended it to council, expressing a desire to prioritize the bike-ped projects in the vicinity of Highway 116. That was specifically put into their recommendation. Following that, so the CIP constraints, this is sort of framing up our discussion of the CIP, like what it is and what it isn't. So it is important to compare it to the revenue projections because that's a reality check. It's, okay, this is all the things we'd like to do, but because of budget, revenue constraints, you know, we have to be real and keep it, keep them to what we can afford to do. And at the same time, reflecting the city's commitments. For example, our commitments now are to, a big part of our commitment, road preservation that we have, improving our parks and replacing old playground equipment and just enhancing Also, it's important that these are public projects where the city has some level of control over the timing, budgeting of them. So there's a whole other family of projects out there that private development installs. And that is wholly predicated and dependent on the timing of those projects, which we don't have any control over. So a lot of the Salsonoma Business Park, for example, where any kind of frontage along Highway 116 would happen once that area develops. You know, tying it together, the intersections there at West Catati, Alder becoming, all of that, for example, those are public projects, but they're tied to being triggered by private development. So you will not see those in this report. There's also public infrastructure owned by other agencies. For example, Caltrans, which owns the Highway 116. And so that's subject to the state funding and state timing. That's not to say the city doesn't have oversight. We do for the private projects and for the Caltrans projects. We would do a rigorous review and conditioning of those projects. All right. So the selection of projects, we're not going, I wasn't anticipating going through a detailed look at every single department and each other, projects in each department. But I think an overview of our philosophy of how these projects were selected is a good idea. So first off, like I said, five years is very near-term, you know? And for example, the general plan and master plans are envisioning build-out decades in the future. This is five years. So yes, there are other projects outside this timing horizon we eventually would like to install, but there's a reason they're not in this five-year CIP. So it's, and then the second bullet there is the master plans have these, the priority list of projects, and they're the highest projects typically are brought into the five-year CIP. But there's a flexibility built into this process. For example, street preservation is the priority. However, there's opportunities to include projects from the bike-ped master plan. And so, A, we're going to be repaving this street, so we might as well stripe it, put down the green paint, enhance crosswalks, you know, do safety measures and so forth. And we've seen that over the last couple of years, you know, with the sharrows, the bike, you know, share the road over in the L section, with the three-way stop there by the fire station. There's just been a number of, the bike-ped projects have been brought in. And that's going to be true in a big way in the summer with our projects where we do the circle streets in West Catati Avenue. Those crosswalks there will be enhancing and bike lanes and the green paint will be put down there. And those are by staff looking, hey, we're doing these streets, we're looking over at these other companion documents, a bike-ped master plan, and seeing what the overlap is. Okay? Another flexed area of, you know, where we're just putting our heads up and going, whoa, what about this? Is there's a priority sewer project in Olaf Street and William Street. We're looking at upsizing those existing pipelines as per the master plan recommendations. And if we're paving those streets this summer, we can't do that for another five years. So we're designing that now. Council approved the design a couple of months ago. And we're looking to get, come back, putting that out to bid in March and then coming back in April timeframe to do an amendment for a construction project. And that just makes sense. That's the only sewer project in the next five years that actually is coincident with a street project in this CIP. There are no water mains that are under streets that are paving. Now that we're paving a lot of streets, we come upon this problem. You know, when we weren't doing many streets, you know, we didn't have to worry about this. But now, a lot of our streets are getting new, you know, becoming renewed. Maintenance, as I mentioned, so we have inflow and filtration into, that's the typo there, inflow and flow. But, you know, we get groundwater and surface water finding its way into the sewer and that increases our wastewater bill with Santa Rosa. So it really is, gives us the biggest bang for the buck to tighten up our system. And then, of course, this community center re-roofing is not found in any master plan. It's just we're evaluating our buildings and that generates projects for the CIP. The parks projects were selected based on public input and reflect the highest benefit in a set dollar amount. So the council and the planning commission recently received presentations on the parks' capital plan. And we took a look at what the highest priorities were coming out of that capital plan. And the approach there was a little different. We said, okay, we can afford $150,000 a year on improving our parks and these are the highest priorities within each park. And that's how that was, that was arrived at. Like, for example, Putnam Park, I believe it's like two and a half or three million dollars for build-out of that park. Well, that's going to have to happen over time. So we're going to take the dog park, the fence around it, the pathway, and see how far we can get on those aspects of that park within that budget. Are we going to complete the whole path and both dog parks with that budget? It's too fuzzy right now. We haven't done, we haven't sharpened our pencils with those engineers' estimates or something, but we're pushing in the right direction. And we'll have more to report on that as we, you know, look at designs and get further down the road. But again, getting into the CIP, it's going to be likely to get into the 2021 annual budget where funds are committed. And then it just gets more and more of a commitment the further down that process it goes. Okay. So nuts and bolts kind of stuff. We've got a list of completed projects here. So you can see there's a healthy amount of accomplishments in each of the department areas. You know, we actually, at Well 1A, there was an above-ground motor making a lot of noise. We heard complaints from neighbors. It's now submersible pump. It's just whispers. You can hardly hear it when it's on because it's 300 feet or, you know, 150 feet down, you know, in the motor part. St. Joseph's Water Main was upsized. There was SCADA improvements, chlorine analyzers were built, sewer, the P1 sewer, of course, and the sewer meter billing. We downed to control of it from Santa Rosa. It's now just near our corporation yard. This is the main meter that measures all of our flow that we're billed on. And the St. Joseph's Way sewer replacement and then SCADA upgrades, streets, we've got the 2018 street construction project, 2019 street construction projects in the East Catati Avenue, parks, the lighting project, sunflower tennis courts, restroom, Veranda Falletti, the basketball court project there, and the East School Street. I'm sorry, Veranda Falletti was a DG path there, fence, East Catati, East School Street, rather, the basketball court. Under buildings, we did upgrade the city hall HVAC and that was more a maintenance kind of emergency project. And I'm going to scratch the Veranda Falletti Ranch building improvements because it's out to bid right now. So it's a little premature to say it's complete. But that should show up on next year's report. Just jump the gun a little bit on that one. New projects. Okay, so we've got a healthy list for water and sewer. Again, this is over the five-year timeframe. I just want to highlight with water that we've got, we have the Cypress tank, which comes along with the booster pumps, working over there, yes. And the pipeline. Now, it is a big hit to the budget. It's a two and a half million dollar chunk like in two, three years from now. We do have our sewer and water financial plan. Our rate study underway. And so we are looking at options of bonding that project just to smooth the rates, impact on rates. And then there's a number of other improvements. Continued, onto the next slide, the roadways lists all the five. Okay. Well, it's a long list for the roadways. And again, it's emphasizing pavement preservation. And then you can see the Murrell Avenue bike and ped improvements. We're pulling that in for the bike-ped master plan, crosswalk upgrades, pathway improvements. And then the wayfinding. We've got phase two of that out to bid currently. So phase one of that is out to bid right now. This is phase two. So it's more the kiosks and just finishing up the rest of that project. Drainage has really translated into trash. So our master plan is, I think it's back in 2001, it's getting a little antiquated. And so a lot of, what's happened in the last 19 years is the emphasis has gotten from just getting rid of the water from a site to trying to hold it, slow it, treat it, you know, work with more like a natural system. And so, and it's also, water quality has become an emphasis. So we just recently adopted a trash implementation plan, just to implement measures at the inlets, outlets, to capture trash and stop it from getting into the waterways. And so those are tangible dollar amounts that we have over a 10-year period. And so that found its way into this five-year CIP. And that's regulatory-driven. Parks, you'll see in that department, we've got improvements to Putnam Park, Helen, Putnam Park, Helen Putnam Park, sorry, La Plaza Park, Civic Center, Falletti Park, and the play structure there. And I think we're hitting Helen Putnam Park Abbey with its improvements in the next five years. Buildings, we've got the roof and refurbishments. We're designing that currently and getting it ready to bid and construct in 2021. Civic Center complex miscellaneous improvements. I believe that is freshening up these buildings, putting paint job, perhaps repaving the parking lot here. We had some refurbishments here at this council chambers. City Hall repainting, yeah, sorry, I mentioned that. Okay, projects removed or delayed. And these will be standard sections in the CIP as you see them in the staff report. So water, sewer, streets and none, we did look at the need for P2A, the sewer. It's the extension of the P1 sewer. It just keeps going down Old Red, goes around along Arthur Street and connects up to, on East Catati Avenue. And that's just, once it gets there, it'll completely relieve our sewer all the way out for the foreseeable future. P1 has actually done a tremendous amount of good to relieve our system. So that's enabling us to push off 2A past the five-year time horizon. And then building the Civic Center roof and refurbishments. We had envisioned actually getting that constructed this fiscal year, but because we couldn't just have a roofing contractor say, hey, give us a quote, go off and do it. There's structural needs for potential solar panels and then the eaves and the gutters. There's some structural improvements, strengthening we'll need to do that's not just... strengthening we'll need to do that's not just really apparent, we're going to just look at it, because we have to have a structural engineer look at, evaluate it, to find out exactly how that project should be specified for construction. I do have to say that as the report printed, and the agenda package is not how it's going to look, for some reason, the agenda package does not recognize landscaping. The figures and the tables are landscaped, so they face each other, and it's a lot more legible. And then they will be bound and provided on the website as well as copies available to the public, and just made readily available right in time for the annual budget process. All right, so in conclusion, right, it informs the annual budget. It's going to be revisited every year, reflects the highest priority projects in these different departments, and is matched with our best estimate for what revenues are going to be. And then I'll just leave you with the recommendation to, it is recommended to conduct a public hearing, and then upon conclusion, adopt the resolution, accepting, adopting the CIP.
And one more thing I'll just add to it, just for, this is a quick thing, is that as Craig said, this assumes that, basically it's assumed on projected revenue, all known revenue sources, right? So if we get, and we're always applying for grants, if we get a grant, that isn't reflected here, but it could be a new project that's brought in, and we revisit this every year with the budget process, so it gets updated annually. And the last, just kind of fine point I'll put on the funding is that you saw in the earlier mid-year presentation, sort of our funding streams, and you saw sales tax, which is a large gray block, half of which is Measure G. So if, basically, what I guess my point is, is that this whole capital program, streets and parks, relies on general, on Measure G, being available to fund a lot of this work as well as match grants. So in this time horizon, we're, I think we're on course, but it's just a future consideration that you seem to keep in mind. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll bring it to council. Are there any questions for staff? No, 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 nothing over here. Okay, so open up to public comments. Yes, Mr. Barich.
Measure G, Measure B, G, one of the reasons you have financial shortfalls right now is that you did not lower taxes. You'd have a lot more sales taxes had you lowered the sales tax rate. That's why you're in the problem that you're in. You can't maintain the town in a basic level already. And where is the CIP for the downtown specific plan? When are we going to talk about the downtown specific plan? The 30-year plan to remodel the downtown area? No money. Didn't we just do the roof on this building a few years ago with all those core samples? So we're going to redo the roof again. Is that what I'm hearing? Or can I get a little explanation about re-roofing this roof again? Before the building is earthquake retrofitted and lifted and repaired, which would completely negate all the work done on a new roof? And we're going to repaint city hall. If that's not putting lipstick on a pig, what is your plan for a new city hall for the next 30, 40 years? Where is that in your projections? We can't stay here in this building another 50-year folk, 50 years, folks. We can't do it. It's a fraud on the community. I appreciate what you're trying to do, Mr. Scott, and I appreciate the report. The responsibility falls on the city council. It's a fraud on this community, what you're trying to do, saying that higher taxes are bringing us all this civic prosperity. It's not. It's a joke. The town is falling apart. You're way behind on your plans. Mr. Scott is, gave us the best-case scenario on what can be done, what could be done. State grants? Is anybody serious about grants from the federal or the state government? What are you people smoking? There is no grant money for any of this.
Okay, well, thank you for those comments on the five-year capital improvement program. So with that, I'll bring it back to council. I'll close public comment officially. And now we're back.
I would just have to say no real questions, but I would have to comment, the list of completed projects in the last year is very impressive. But when you list it with what's in the offing for the next few years, that's really rather substantial and very impressive for a community this size. I've had a chance to watch the staff grow and the city grow in its capabilities and its oversight and its ability to respond to the needs of the community appropriately. And I think the level of organization that staff has been able to grow and put forward is just really obvious to me. And I have a sense, it's already becoming obvious to the public just from the roads projects in the last few years, and I think as we go forward with more roads, with the parks, with the wayfinding program, all these different things, people will have the sense of what a well-run small city is. And that's just perhaps a personal impression, but for some reason, I felt the need to share it.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the adoption of the resolution?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I move to adopt a resolution, adopting. It's two adopts in one, wow. The city's five-year capital improvement program.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, no no's and nays or abstentions, so it's a five-o vote. With that, we'll move on to item 13, city manager's report. And I'll turn back to Mr. Obin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to let everyone know that we had economic development workshop in the planning commission last week, February 18th, and we got some great feedback, and we're looking forward to bringing it back to the planning commission in March, and right now it's looking like city council in April. That's coming up. And just to report back on the polystyrene ordinance that was introduced, but we've been working with Zero Waste Sonoma on the ordinance questions that came up in that meeting. And the conclusion was essentially what we had arrived at after lengthy discussion at that meeting, which is that those items that were listed specifically, you know, the straws, lids, condiment packages, things like that, are, they should be, you know, recyclable, compostable, or whatever, but they should always be that, but if, but even if they are that, they should only be provided to customers upon request. So they've updated their outreach materials. We're reaching back out to businesses to let them know that this is actually how it's going forward. So the ordinance itself doesn't really have to change, but that's how it's going forward. So the council should see it back, I think, in March sometime. And then police, on February 18th, the police officers conducted their second special traffic operation this month, and this was at the corner of Old Red and Charles Street. The officers were on foot, in uniform and plainclothes during the operation, which was focused on people that are failing to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk, cell phone use while driving, and failure to stop at a stop sign. So in the two-hour operation, they got 11 traffic citations, so 11 people will at least be modifying their behavior for a while, hopefully. And I think, I think probably several more warnings in addition to the actual citation. So that is good, because we certainly get that feedback from people downtown, that people don't stop or they go too fa, they go too fast through there. The police department also got a grant, oh, we heard about grants a minute ago, so got a grant for radios, portable radios, those are handheld radios. Department of Homeland Security is a federal grant. Federal, yeah. And so they got, we got a second round of funding for the remainder of the handheld radios, just this month, so we're going to be able to replace all of our handheld radios under this federal homeland security grant. And then construction updates, Kessing, just so you know, they probably have seen a lot of activity over there. They've tied in the water service, largely tied it in there on Kessing Range Development. They've done the initial pavement lift, the asphalt lift on that road, that road down the middle of development. And they poured the foundations for the model homes, which are on kind of the Valparaiso frontage. You see the form boards, and they've already pumped concrete in there. So that is moving right along. And the Veranda Falletti Ranch pre-construction, there's a ranch house and water tower. The pre-construction meeting is tomorrow. As you recall, that was awarded, so we're just starting construction up. And by March, it should be rolling out there, so it'll be good. And wayfinding, as was mentioned, is out to bid. Bid's open next Tuesday. And traffic flow improvements, there's Old Redwood Highway, the kickoff meeting's happening this week. This past Saturday, we hosted our third annual Sweetheart Fairy Tales Dance in the Kattati Room and had approximately 50 guests, which is great, great turnout for that event. And we also recently started a free yoga class for older adults through Santa Rosa JC, older adults program. This is, this is an ongoing class on Tuesdays from 1:00 to 2:30 in the Kattati Room. You can sign up through the JC or through us. And it's just another thing on top of the free Zumba class that we also offer, the Zumba Gold class for seniors. And so just expanding offerings for the senior population. This, actually, March 28th, not this Saturday, but Saturday, March 28th, we have our annual community yard sale in the Kattati Room. And so we're accepting gently-used, new and gently-used donations on Thursday and Friday before the event, and we sell them to the community, and the proceeds from that sale go towards rec programming. So it's been a really successful program, and we're continuing it again this year. And then for all this, all these rec-type things, you can always contact Ashley at 665-4222, or at www.kattatacyd.org. That'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Senator? No? Oh, yes. Vice Mayor Moore.
You said we had a senior Zumba class? Is that a higher liability?
Zumba Gold. I think it's low impact.
Hello?
Yeah, I haven't actually been in the class, but...
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 14, city council member reports. Vice Mayor Moore?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Councilmember Lemon? Councilmember Harvey?
Okay, let's see, I've been a little busy. So I attended the Waste Management Agency meeting. I'll just pick one thing from there, and that's that Santa Rosa is apparently getting close to determining what they're going to do with their biosolids, and that in turn will allow more information on the composting out at the treatment plant. So people are anxious about that, but until they decide what they're going to do with that, then that's been a holdup. I also attended the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency. The most important thing out of that one was that January 31st, the first batch of plans were actually submitted to the state. So it will be interesting to see what the state does with those and what, what we can learn from those. Ours is progressing, but they want to really kind of see what, what the outcome and what gets accepted for those plans and what, you know, so we can plan accordingly. I also attended the mayors and council members meeting in Sonoma, and I attended the ledge committee meeting with my colleague, and Senator Dodd was there, and they gave us a lot of really good information. So I will leave it at that.
Okay, great. Councilmember DeLacess.
Yeah, and just in consideration of the late hour, I was going to report out on the ledge committee and the different bills that we went over, but I think I'll just save it for the next meeting, report out then.
Okay, sounds good. And I unfortunately missed the mayors and council members meeting because I managed to throw out my back. It was fantastic. Okay. With that, we will move on to public comments on non-action item agendas. Mr. Barich.
Can we all just agree together that the downtown specific plan is dead? It's just dead, and we want to need to put that on a future agenda, what we're going to do. We heard from Mr. Scott tonight about the next five-year plan. That's going to put the downtown specific plan at year 15. By year 15 or by, or year 20, we're going to have to redesign the downtown specific plan again, because it's going to be obsolete and outdated technically and traffic engineering-wise and so forth. Now, we spent a million dollars on the consultants. We paid the consultants for the downtown specific plan, not to mention my time, Mrs. Harvey's time, attending all the workshops, all the study sessions. It's really been an amazing 10 years. Downtown specific plan, a whopping $73 million public project through this town. Utilities, parking garages, everything, roundabouts, and here we are, failure, complete I'd like the mayor to end the meeting tonight in memory of our homeless in Kattati. They're out in the cold tonight, sleeping in their cars, in the creeks, in the bushes, under the freeways, and so forth. Another year has gone by without putting on the agenda what you plan to do about the homeless in our community. Keep kicking this can down the road. Hope you feel very, very proud of yourselves as Democrats. Good night.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to item 16, any information received after the agenda was posted? None, thank you very much. And we'll move on to item 17, and because we like to keep this party started, closed session conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section, say it with me, 54956.9. And that is for one potential case, and we will adjourn to closed session. It is now 11:16. Thank you. I'll come back and report back after.